Okay, set to go. Like to welcome everyone here tonight. Appreciate you all for being here. This is divided into two sessions tonight. The first session is for the CDVG grant public hearing. And so we're convening the Grantsville City Council. Conducted and convened in a regular session. Today's Wednesday, December 3rd at 7:00 PM. The Grantsville City Hall, 429 East Main Street, Grantsville, Utah, and on Zoom. We got three council present here. And when the other two are able to get here, they were stuck on some traffic. We will stop the meeting and announce them. Okay. We're going to open the public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDVG. And the purpose of the public here is provide citizens with pertinent information about the CDVG program and allow discussion of possible applicants, applications for the 2026 funding cycle. Anybody like to stand up and be part of that? See any none? We'll close that item. So if you haven't heard the, of this grant before, it's, the money comes from the state but is issued through the Wasatch Front Regional Council. And it benefits low and moderate income persons in our region. Grantsville City is a member of the Wasatch Front. And we're expecting to receive about a million dollars for this new program year. The eligible, eligible project types are activities include the construction of public works and the facilities such as water and sewer lines, fire stations, acquisition of real property, and provision of public service. Provision of the public service such as food banks and homeless shelters. In the past, Grantsville has been awarded one community development block grant, and that was to replace the water line on Apple Street from Park Street to Hale Street. That's an old line. It's cast iron. We have one hydrant in the middle of that entire block. And by doing, applying for this grant, and we got it, we haven't been able to take care of that because of the government shutdown and the things that have come because of that. That'll be on the agenda for being replaced next spring. Okay? And also as part of the parking right out east of town. Okay? The city has handed, city has handed out its capital investment plan as part of the regional consolidation plan. This list shows the projects that the city has identified for the need of the community. And if anybody has any questions, comments, suggestions during this, this talk, or you can identify yourself. And Alexis has the, the rules and bylaws that we operate from. If there's any other suggestions you can do for what we can use this money for, we'd love to have you come and let us know if you've got some ideas. And since we had no public hearing on this, no public comment, we'll close that meeting now. And we need to have a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion is their second, second. Motion is second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. We're gonna give them four minutes so you just be relaxed for a minute. We'll do it seven, ten. Maybe they'll get hit by that. You didn't go to the light parade? You guys missed out. It's fabulous. There's a little boy that I met on Hale Street. It's from Twilla. His grandmother and his mother brought him down because he likes these lights. And he was so excited just to be there and be part of it. And then there was a group of about 20, 25 people that were there from all over the state. Some from Logan, some from Eagle Mountain, and then people from Twilla and Grantsville. People had come down there and watched this amazing little, little thing. And then there was one truck in there that I think was the fan favorite though. Had more lights on it than I've ever seen anything in my life. Not sure how he did it, but glad he was there. It's one of the two of them because I just texted them. I heard it being. You notice this is starting at seven ten.
I'm gonna say walk again.
Well, I just thought I'd.
Like the tracking device, man.
That's what those things are.
A lot of red lights tonight. As in back of cars.
I was gonna say, I think we need to add more.
I got mine from Park City.
Okay.
Oh, too bad. It still starts at night a little bit.
Okay, Lisa, you said, okay. Again, welcome everybody for being here. This is a regular meeting of the Grantsville City Council. And for the record, today's date is December 3rd, 2025, and the time is 7:10 PM. This meeting is being held in the Grantsville City offices located 429 East Main Street, Grantsville, Utah, and on Zoom. Mayor Neil Pitchlow and four council members are present. Councilwoman Hammond has asked to, to be excused for the first part of the meeting. She's stuck in traffic. Okay, I've asked Les Peterson if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Present arms. Please follow me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take your seats. Appreciate you coming to do that. Okay, first item on the agenda is public comment. I'd like to stand and thank public comment. Please identify yourself. You've got three minutes.
Derek Dalton, council members, mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. First off, I want to say that there's no ill will against the Jeffries family. They're great people in our community and I love them. But this needs to be said. So after reviewing the Solberg's request for close to a half a million dollars in fee relief, I need to be very clear. Approving this would be bad policy. Fiscally irresponsible and unfair to our taxpayers. First, let's, let's ground this in reality. We already have a Solberg's in Grantsville. We already, already received sales tax from them today. Their letter paints a picture of a huge new tax gains, but the truth is the increase would be modest. We're not getting a brand new retailer. We're getting a relocated and expanded version of the one we already have. That's not a reason to hand out a half a million dollars in subsidies. Second, let's remember that the city has already spent millions of taxpayer dollars improving the infrastructure around this site. Widening roads, utilities, intersection upgrades. Those were public investments that directly benefit this project. Now they want to, they want the city to absorb another half million in impact fees on top of that? At some point, we have to ask, when is enough enough? Third, approving this sets a dangerous precedent. Every developer pays their impact fees, residential, commercial, industrial. These fees exist, so growth pays for growth. If we start waiving them for one large retailer, we won't be able to say no when the next developer shows up with their handout. And it won't stop there. We're, we are not in the business of subsidizing private companies that they can afford major expansions. Fourth, the developer suggests using future property and sales tax revenue to reimburse their own impact fees. But that revenue belongs to the public. Those dollars fund police, fire, parks, water, roads, and everything our residents rely on. Choosing to give that future revenue, revenue back to the private, to a private developer means choosing not to fund critical services. That's the very opposite of fiscal responsibility. Fifth, the developer argues that the state CRDA programs are no longer available, so the city should effectively, effectively invent its own incentive for them. It's not the city's role to recreate the system locally, especially not for a single business. Finally, the transportation impacts from a 46,000 square foot grocery store and an 11,000 square foot hardware store are significant. If the developer doesn't pay their transportation impact fee, the taxpayers will. And now, and after already investing millions of dollars in this area, it is unacceptable to shift even more costs on, onto residents. So again, when is enough enough? At what point do we stop subsidizing private projects with public money? For the sake of fairness, fiscal responsibility, and the integrity of our impact fee system, I strongly urge you to deny this request. Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to take a moment?
You do have someone online once we're done with.
Tell us who you are.
Yes, my name is Candace Horn, and I'm the Director of Government Relations for YESCO. Thanks for allowing me some time to speak tonight about the changes in your sign code. First, I want to compliment Bill and Nicole on their work with drafting this sign code. After the initial reading, they reached out to James Carpenter, who's the Director of the International Sign Association, and myself to help make some changes to the code that we recommended. And their passion and professionalism they showed toward the city was very admirable, and we appreciated the time to talk through the issues we saw with the code. Most of the subjects that we addressed were discussed and modified. However, the subject that I'm here to speak on tonight is monument signage. The proposed code states that monument signs along State Road 138, State Road 112, and other commercial industrial zones shall be a maximum of six feet in height. Unless it is a multi-tenant sign, then it can be 20 feet in height. Our recommendations are to allow monument signs to be 10 feet in height and for freestanding signs to be 20 feet in height for all commercial industrial districts along State Road 138 and State Road 112 for the following reasons. The first and foremost is safety. If a sign is only five feet tall, that means the wording on the sign's only going to be two feet or three feet above the ground. The American Planning Association's Street Graphics and Law recommends that the sign copy, so the, the reading that, the writing that you're reading is to be located no lower than five feet from street grade due to other vehicles that will block the sign. That means that the writing on the sign needs to be five feet, and the sign overall height recommended needs to be a maximum of 10 feet in height. I have some safety information from different studies that I can send to you as a council that will address sign visibility. An example of this monument sign is right outside of this building. Your city sign out here is 10 feet tall, and the message center probably is about five feet in height. If you were to comply with the proposed code that you're going with, that message center would be on the ground, and how would anybody see what the writing was? And that's going to bring safety issues, right? My second reason would be since many of the freestanding signs will become non-conforming under the proposed code, this may very well lead to a mix of older, taller, or differently styled signs alongside newer, smaller signs. The inconsistency can create visual clutter and undermine the aesthetic goals leading to less attractive commercial industrial environments. The third one is advocating for new businesses. They're placed at a disadvantage because they must comply with more restrictive signage requirements from the start, often resulting in smaller, less visible signs compared to existing signs. So an example of this would be a fast food restaurant, say McDonald's, that wants to come in and they want to compete with Arby's. Well, they want the same signage that Arby's has, but under this proposed code, they can't do that. And an example of some of this happening was right here at Lake Point. I helped them with the sign code that they did, a few of us did, and we're in this very meeting, and Wendy's had.
Three minutes.
Oh, okay. That was my time. Thank you, you guys.
Appreciate you. So Candace, can you send that to the council? You got all their email addresses, the, the information you were talking about?
Sure.
Okay, somebody online?
Krista McFarlane.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you guys for your time. My name is Krista McFarlane. And I just wanted to echo what Derek said. The city already put a significant investment into the infrastructure surrounding the Solberg's development. And as a citizen, I, like, it's really disappointing to, to see them request the, the waiving of the impact fees that, that they are. And I, again, just echoed Derek's comments that this is an investment that they're making, and it's something that they should be contributing to. And I would like to see the council hold them to those impact fees that every other developer in the area is helped to.
Okay, is that it? Anybody else wants to?
We've got a few. So Lisa Lingwall.
Okay. Go ahead, Lisa.
Lisa, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Okay, sorry. Give me a minute. Lisa Lingwall. And I just wanted to also echo both Derek and Krista's sentiments about the Solberg's and what we're gonna end up paying. Because it will come back on the taxpayers. I moved here two years ago from Sandy, Utah. And part of the reason why we came out here was for a lower cost of living. And it's been very disappointing to us. In Sandy, Utah, our taxes were lower than they are here in Grantsville, Utah. Our first year here, our, our taxes were raised $500 a month, not, not a year, but a month. And then we got another tax hike this year. And so it's really kind of disappointing that, that the city keeps approving these things that will cost the taxpayers more money. And, um, you know, it, it seems to me that the commercial, the commercial businesses are what are supposed to help us lower our taxes. And if the city is, you know, bowing to these and letting them get by with these fee waivers, then the taxpayers are the ones that are, are taking the brunt of it. And I just really feel like, you know, as a, a new citizen here, it's, it's been really disappointing, and it might end up whole. And so it, it's really disappointing here that, that this is what it's, it's come to. And we, we may not even be able to stay here. It's getting to where we can't afford it. And as a, as a new citizen, that is really a disappointing thing. We want to fit into this community. We want to be part of this community and be the solutions to the problems here and not, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to assimilate to what the country living is out here. But how can we do that when we have these high rates of taxing? And so I just wanted to just give my opinion about it all.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Christine Johnson.
I just want to echo what Eric, or sorry, what Derek said. And I just also want to point out, in the future, when we have other businesses wanting to build in Grantsville, how do you think that's going to impact them when they know that the city did this for one business? They're going to ask, other businesses are going to ask. And, and how are you going to say no to them when you did it for someone else? That's not fair. And that's part of being a business owner. And I think it's terrible that a business would ask for more from the city. So if you're going to do it for one, you better do it for all, because that is, that's just terrible. And it's, I think you're opening yourself up to a, a problem down the road when you have a business that you say no to. And they can say, well, you did it for Solberg's. Why didn't you do it for me?
Thank you. Anybody else?
Crystal Bowen.
Crystal, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I also agree with everyone else that has spoken before myself. Solberg shouldn't be an exception, and that's tough to say. They have great ties to the community. They've served us for years. My family has worked for them. However, I don't, I agree with Christine saying you can't give an exception to one and not the others. And I don't really agree with her saying that you should give everyone an exception. I feel like everyone should participate in the, the cost that it takes to build a business here if you want to serve the community here. So everyone should participate in paying the fees, in my opinion.
Thank you. Anybody else? That's it? Anybody in the council chambers? See none? We'll close that item of business. And we'll go to summary action items. First one's the approval of minutes from the November 17th, 2025 City Council Work Meeting.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the November 17th City Council Work Meeting.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
About the regular City Council.
So. I move that we approve the meeting.
Sorry, I didn't get the 17th regular meeting minutes done, but the November 18th work meeting, joint work meeting is there.
Okay. So I move that we approve the November 18th City Council and Planning Commission Joint Work Meeting.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. B is approval of the bills.
I make a motion that we approve the bills.
Motion is their second.
A second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we go to item number three, the presentation by Joseph Fred of the Twilla Valley Small Business Development Center for his report.
Mr. Mayor and council, it's great to be here again.
It's been a pleasure to have you for four years coming and visiting us. Appreciate you doing that.
You stole the words right from my presentation, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's bittersweet to see some of you leave. We, we really appreciate it. Twilla Tech and the SBC, the service that you give and the leadership that you've shown. But we're also grateful for a system where others can come in behind you and participate and continue the, the example that you've shown. So thank you, and thanks for setting a high standard. I'm really delighted to be here tonight and to, to do this every year. I, I get really excited about this presentation. For those present that may not be aware, the Small Business Development Center is a business resource. It's a counseling and coaching resource that was developed by the small, by the SBA many decades ago to assist small businesses in everything from ideation and startup all the way through to exit strategies. So we, we assist business owners who are trying to start and succeed. And our services are free to everybody that we help. And that's possible because of the support of our partners, such as Grantsville City. And so I, I really look forward to this presentation to show you the impact that we've had this year. Because I, I, I want you to know, first of all, how much that support has been appreciated and is appreciated. And I really look forward to showing you how far it's gone and what we've been able to do. Now, you'll, you'll see that you also have a handout before you. So if anybody's not here or wants to take a nap, you've got everything that I'm going to tell you right there on the page. But let's go ahead and look at it in color. Whoops. Here we go. This past year, and this is as of December, or not in December, but of October of this year, our center at Twilla Technical College has served 165 businesses. Your handout will also indicate that 33 of those were located in Grantsville. And that has constituted 361 hours of counseling and helping people to come up with their marketing strategies and execute on those or to form funding packages and to be able to get money for their business and to work out operational issues primarily. We get a lot of startups. It's well over half of the people that we work with that are trying to figure out how to organize and how to get started. So that's been, that's been a very rewarding thing. In that effort, we've also brought 45 new jobs to the county. The financial impact of that to Twilla Valley this year has been a little over $3.7 million in grants, loans, and increased sales to the businesses. So that's total. And you can see a four-year or a five-year comparison year to year just to give you an idea of how far we've come. And you can see that we're. And you can see that we're, we're making progress. On the financial impact, I just want to point out that two thousand twenty-four was kind of a unicorn. And we had uh, we had a client that uh, built a large facility in the county and that was an inordinate amount of funding that we were able to get. So you'll see a real spike in two thousand twenty-four, but overall we're climbing each year. We're making really great progress and, and we're really happy about the success that our businesses are seeing. Um, whoops. You know, okay, we don't get to watch the movie just yet. Okay, just wanted to show you also the, the support that you've given us um, has allowed us to do more. So this is a, a reflection of hours spent in, in the work that we do uh, comparing two thousand twenty-four when we started tracking it this way and this year. And so you can see that we're up about twenty percent over what we were doing last year. And the demand doesn't look to be slowing down at all. And I, I, I'll say that uh, we've been able to do this with very little promotion and advertising. Um, I joke sometimes that our number must be on bathroom walls somewhere because people just keep coming in. And it's great and we're, we're grateful for that. And we, we're grateful to Grantsville City and to your business licensing office uh, who uh, refers people to us that have questions uh, when they apply for a business license or other things to do with their business that that office might not be uh, equipped to answer. So uh, we've, we've got a great partnership there. We're grateful for it. I wanted to show you next a video. I, I thought it would be uh, kind of beneficial to show you an example of, of the people that we've been able to help. Please.
Okay, for the record, I'd like to recognize that uh, this woman Hammond arrives, so. Okay.
Well, Councilman Hammond, you're, you're here for the best part of the presentation.
Good, because the traffic has been terrible.
Um, I wanted you to see firsthand um, uh, an example of the businesses that we assist. And then what you're going to see here is our last business of success story of the year that we've promoted and I, I'll just let them speak for themselves.
And so it's going to have waste. And what Mike did, he eliminated all of that waste. My name's Chris Patel and uh, before we started here in Utah, I was originally born out of Salt Lake. Then I moved out here to Twill, I'm a fourth by year and recovered my balance. I have a basket cure, remember my belt became clean? I started by working with junk court. In the process of being in junk court, I also attended a patient treatment over at Odyssey House. And that's where I found my love for culinary. Started into a program where I did actually not only learn how to work the kitchen, but can also after completing Odyssey House and working over there, I started solo living. Where I also became a house manager. As a house manager, I started developing the, you know, the empty inside of the, the empty item and something real. So I started working here on a boat, you know, training, that's when I found the opportunity when I come to life. So I started researching for it. Started to look into the possibility of what type of equipment I would need. Uh, how, how much that costs. Uh, what type of life you think that would take to play, uh, to like go into the county office. At the contact with the county office, they definitely overcame. Where I mentioned, he gave me the roadmap to getting my business license and getting my thing to go. Within a week that went out, we got my license, right, went down along with some of my equipment. Uh, that's how I found the study. What Mike did, he eliminated all of that waste. The waste can also affect your beard, affects the smell, affects the flavor profile, it affects the mouth feel. It affects everything that goes into your food. The goal, cleaning the draft system, is so that you can have that same type of quality care that you get out of the bottle. Also, to help with the waste that goes into the system, because with a clean draft system, we have less salt being less things like that going into it. So typically you want to get a lot of the waste is blocked right out of the country. With a dirty system, you're also going to get like step due thing. And so a clean system will actually help make it so that you're recently offered some increased points. That's because it's helping amazing amount of resources with wild cats might go on the grounds with ground dirt, you talk about. Just to be that they would have ready here. Everybody there is supervised, super helpful, and everybody's supported that they have, they definitely help me launch my business.
I should mention that uh, Christian that you just saw is about to hire his first two employees. And uh, I just, I wanted you to see that example because it's, it's not just about the dollars or the businesses. Uh, the support that you give changes lives. And uh, I'm so grateful for what this uh, city has done to help us be able to have these experiences every day. To be able to see these stories and then be a part of them. And I wanted you to know what you're a part of, where you have a chance to build and there are a hundred and sixty-five of those stories this year alone. So um, it's really exciting. It's neat to see what's happening and I, I wanted to thank you for that. Also, I just wanted to give you some quick uh, updates on Twill Technical College that uh, you might be aware of. We, we celebrated our expansion of our campus. Uh, it doubled in square footage. And we completed a twenty-four million dollar expansion i- in March officially. We're still kind of tweaking a few things right now, but it's a, it's a great facility and it's already filling up again. So uh, we're really excited about that and, and the records that are being set there uh, as we develop the workforce here in the county. Our custom fit program, which is a state grant that we help manage for the, for the county. Uh, and it, it pays up to fifty percent of any training costs that an employer has for their people or for themselves. Uh, we were able to serve sixty uh, businesses in the valley employers. And that was uh, that constituted six hundred and five participants that went through training this year of various types. And uh, and they did uh, thirteen thousand five hundred plus hours in training this year. And, and that was a total investment of three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars that we were able to make there. So uh, we're alive and well with the uh, the bigger businesses and the employers that are happening there. And just for the benefit of everyone that's here or that might be listening online, uh, that is also available to small and micro businesses as well. So um, uh, and all they need to do is reach out to me and that can be put together quite quickly. Uh, so uh, we're excited about this. We're grateful to you for your support. And uh, with that, I love to answer any questions if, if you might have them.
Just got a comment. I didn't know, no cleaning the lines was a thing. Makes sense though.
You see what's coming out of that hose? You're kind of glad that it is once you find out.
It's cool.
I, I've, I've had cleaner looking things coming out of my garden hose at home. So that, that, that was exciting to know that that does happen. And uh, it's exciting to know how many bars don't know that you're supposed to clean your lines too. So uh, that business is growing really quickly.
That's cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
I love it. Like, and I, I have to say, I had the opportunity to go um, chaperone for the high school to do the, the touring of Twill Tech and all the different schooling there. And I like wanted to sign up. So you might see me. I'm like, I'll have some time on my hands.
Come on over. We've got a chair for you.
Start a new career or something. But I, I love what you're doing because especially with small businesses, we were just kind of talking about this before the meeting started that you're starting to see it's kind of the new generation's thing. And you're seeing lots of people with these great ideas and, and I think that's, that's where everything starts, right? With that idea and then to have support that you give, I think that's awesome. So.
Well, thank you. Uh, other than these videos, our confidentiality with the SBA prevents me from singling out other businesses, but I will tell you that last night I was at a meeting here in Grantsville with a handful of businesses that are coming together over a technological tool that's being developed uh, that I think will be really quite exciting for the city. And uh, and, and it's really going to put them on the map. So there are things happening. And, and your business owners are quite engaged and passionate about the community. So I'll just tell you that. But uh, thank you again. And uh, uh, I look forward to seeing you next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Close that item of business. And I'll move on to number four, consideration of proving John Montgomery is an alternate planning commissioner. John has been a planning commissioner up in Farmington when they went through the rapid growth, okay? And he's agreed to serve on the uh, just as an alternate. We're not going to uh, uh, appoint him or Chris Fox before they channel him. Um, Heidi becomes the mayor, she can do, take care of those things, fill those positions. But we need to, he, he would like to serve uh, as an alternate, managed to make sure at this point, so. Is he here? No. Oh, yes.
Are we removing the other alternate that we have?
Oh, I think you can have more than those.
Oh, okay.
Do you need a motion?
Need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the appointment of John Montgomery as an alternate planning commissioner.
Motion is their second.
Second.
Second, more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay. Okay, we'll call. Council, Williams.
Aye.
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 And I say nay just because I wanted to meet him. I want to, I want to ask him a few questions and so I guess we'll get that opportunity up to the first of the year and if and when we appoint him to the, to the commission. So that's all.
Okay. Okay. Motion carries them all. Okay, item five, consideration of resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-four. Resolution approving certain impact fee waiver for Solberg's development. Michael?
Yeah, I'll take a little bit of this one. And then I think uh, Steve Minor is going to uh, kind of take over on this point.
Why don't you both come up together? Don't hit each other, but go, go.
So in the process of uh, uh, the building of Solberg's, uh, the, the city has come up and determined the amount of impact fees that are, we are required or requesting from the Solberg's uh, to pay. And the total amount here is five hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred and seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. And um, I won't go listen to every one of those, but I believe the main ones, uh, we're going to break it into two, two portions here, a transportation impact fees and all the other ones that are lumped into that section. And I believe the request tonight is that the um, Solberg's are willing to pay and are, are happy to pay the other impact fees. They're specifically addressing the transportation impact fees tonight. And so that would be the um, transportation impact fees for the office, retail and warehouse. And we as a city, um, we looked at the actual plat and the, the building of this and separated out what was going on in the building and determined which part of the building was warehouse, which part of it was retail and office space and and made the appropriate adjustments to that transportation impact fee because there's different costs that we have in our plans on how that is generated. The, the biggest driver on these ones is the uh, the retail um, the cost for that because it's, we do it right now according to our current proposed impact fees is a thousand square feet. The cost for that would be ten thousand dollars for, ten thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars per thousand square feet. And I believe this building is going to be close to fifty thousand square feet. And so it does create that, that high number there. And I, I believe that um, they're asking for a waiver of the transportation impact fees. And they're um, doing that in regards to the, the cost is um, high and they didn't have that prepared in their banking analysis. And Mr. uh, Minor's going to take more on that. And I think at this point, I'll turn it over to you and you can give your application. Now, we do support uh, as a, a staff that the um, the other fees are accurate and that um, uh, there should be some sort of offset here because they are bringing in a lot of uh, assets and benefits to Grantsville. And it is going to be an anchor company, or company uh, to that corner of that industrial area. And that does create it as a uniqueness and, and offset of uh, what other companies would come in. You would think of it as like a uh, uh, anchor company brings in other ones to come along that way. And because it's the anchor company, they get sometimes more perks is what's seen in other other cities and what other city do in that regard.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Michael. Uh, appreciate the opportunity to be here. It's been a little bit since uh, we were here last and I feel like I'm on the one yard line after uh, three and a half, four years of uh, working closely with Grantsville City. Again, having the privilege thirty-five years ago to work with uh, the city when we uh, built the store on Main Street. That's uh, twenty-five thousand square feet and thirty-five years old uh, from that time. But um, uh, I've been with Associated, I'm senior vice president. Uh, uh, and I, I primarily work with independent retailers. Uh, again, for those that uh, may be new here tonight, we have four hundred and eighty stores in ten states. Uh, we're a cooperative. As you think of a traditional cooperative of uh, the old farmer's cooperative. And so uh, Associated's uh, involvement uh, uh, is probably for four hundred and fifty of those stores is to work with the independent retailers. And so I'm, I'm here at the invitation of David Carroll Jeffries, owner of Solberg's. And again, had the privilege of working with them thirty-five years ago on the original store. I also had the opportunity to work with uh, uh, you know, twenty years ago plus uh, with uh, a Twill when we built Macy's store there. And uh, and we were usually involved in ten or fifteen stores a year. But I, I appreciate Mr. Clifford uh, comments being the small business uh, effort. That's, that's what we do at Associated. We, we help the small people compete against the big uh, publicly traded companies. And uh, there are some people that uh, wonder if there's still a place for the independent pre-enterprise system. And I've dedicated my forty years to fight for that. And uh, I understand some of the sentiment uh, that uh, was expressed early on. But I can tell you that in my forty years of doing this, uh, the public and private partnership is very, very important. If you go from the state of Utah with Governor Cox and with his economic development group, there's a reason there is an economic development program at the state level and going down to the, to the municipalities, the smaller level. And that is uh, because it's really important to have economic development. We, we lose businesses to other cities. We lose them to other states. Um, if we don't have programs uh, for small businesses, uh, then they cease to exist and the larger stores uh, take over all of the smaller stores. Uh, this particular project, as you saw on the outline, is about a nineteen million dollar project. Uh, the Small Business Administration, SBA, is helping with five million dollars of that because uh, they're not a publicly traded company. Uh, because uh, you know, uh, they're not a private company that is large. They have two stores, both in Twill County, one here and one in Stansbury. And so they qualify for a Small Business Administration loan. The maximum amount you can do on a SBA five oh four loan is five million. And so we were having to go out and secure a, a second loan. But I want to make a point, uh, the reason the federal government does an SBA five oh four and does a public and private sector uh, partnership is to be able to help small businesses be successful. And that's the very nature of it. The Small Business Administration allows you to amortize your equipment over twenty-five years as opposed to five or seven years. It allows that five million to be fixed for that twenty-five year period after a debenture bond, uh, you know, is sold the ninety days after uh, the Solberg's. Uh, the Solbergs would open a store. And so uh, to suggest that there's no place uh, in uh, municipalities. And city and state government for economic development programs is just not true. Unless you live in maybe Park City and Sun Valley where uh, you have a monopoly and you, you, you don't probably have to do any of those programs. But, but I, I, I want to assure you in my forty years. That the reason that the public and private sector go into partnership is to create a win-win proposal. Not to give subsidies to uh, an independent retailer that's been here a hundred and thirty years. Uh, serving the community when the chains had no interest in being here. But uh, you know, there, 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 there's the, the, the programs like SBA five oh four. Like the CDRA that we had uh, been talking to and working with, with Cameron uh, at the League of Cities. And at the state level, the legislature in putting programs together. It is an important factor. Now, what's not fair is if there's incentives that municipalities offer. And that, and that particular retailer offers no value back to the community. And I would suggest to you that in my forty years of doing this, one of the single most important sales and property tax revenue and the creators of jobs. In the local community is grocery stores. Grocery stores are a very essential service. We learned that during COVID. Uh, an essential service was the grocery store. It was very stressful in the grocery industry. To try to figure out during COVID to be able to provide those essential services. And we all saw there's some subsidies there that came about for essential services like nursing, uh, like healthcare, like grocery stores. Uh, and it was a public-private sector contribution. For those that are familiar with some of the tax uh, breaks and incentives during that time. They were put in place to be able to help those essential services. Um, I can tell you uh, that when we did our Macy's store in uh, Twilla, that Ken Macy. Uh, received assistance with Twilla City. I can give you assurances that uh, Smiths and Kroger have had substantial assistance. In the store that's going to open up on Saturday uh, in Twilla. And I can tell you that uh, I was in Enix City two weekends ago to build their first uh, fifty thousand. Square foot grocery store and twelve thousand square foot hardware store, very, very similar to this. And that the city council worked with us to waive the impact and permit fees and they totaled two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. And uh, and they also left it open for us to be able to come back and be able to figure out because. They're, they don't want all their sales tax going to Cedar City. They, they want to take a green belt that's accruing two thousand dollars a year in property taxes that. We will now create a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year uh, in our project. And those are incremental property taxes. I mean, a green belt check for two thousand years is not bad, but a hundred and twenty-five thousand is a lot better. And so the reason that Enix City is working with us is because they want to be able to capture that. Sales tax, the same thing, we know between one half and one percent of gross sales of a grocery store and a hardware store. Goes back to the city. We know that Solbergs have been paying just under one percent of what their gross sales is in sales tax revenue. And so um. I know that uh, Grantsville City lost ten to fifteen percent of sales tax revenue. When this Smiths opens up in Twilla. And every time the store opens in an adjoining community, it impacts the projected revenue that a city needs. To be able to have for essential services and what they're doing. I had the privilege of closing our Macy's store in Logan and moving across the street. When I moved across the street, we left Logan City and we went into this little town called Providence. And Providence was more than happy to work with us on a sales and property tax increment. Because uh, they were losing everything to their neighboring municipality. Now. It's just a fact, the way that we're structured in the state of Utah, municipalities compete for retail. They compete for sales and property tax revenue. And um, i- in that one swoop, uh, we were able to take and help significantly Providence, and I don't. I'm not saying anything derogatory towards Logan, but Logan had so many other businesses and so many other grocery stores. But for that one community, it was huge. We created a hundred and fifty jobs in that one community. Essential jobs, you know, kids' jobs and, and uh, those that are retired and, and those that are wanting. Uh, competitive jobs being managers in a bakery deli and a meat and a produce department. But if you look as a role model, the state of Utah in their economic development, yes, we lost Sundance Film Festival and, and they're leaving the state of Utah. And uh, we have grocery stores up in Park City that'll be impacted by that. But don't think for one minute that, that the state did not go and Park City did not work really, really hard. To try to keep uh, the Sundance Film Festival. And so I, 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 I see some things were said earlier. Uh, to suggest that there's no place for private and public sector participation. And I'm suggesting there is as long as the participants are, are creating value for the community that they're proposing to come into. And so um, uh, what I was requested by uh, the mayor, a- and, and again, I'm going to go back. You know, we started off in twenty twenty-two with this project, uh, uh, feeling as though we could get a redevelopment agency, a CDRA. Um, you know, put together and, and uh, we know that there's a um, uh, an affordable housing component on Houseco one fifty-one. That has made that somewhat challenging for smaller communities and smaller uh, independent retailers, you know, uh, for example, like the Solbergs. But nonetheless, the benefit of us closing this store and selling it to somebody else that can come on Main Street and redevelop that building. And, and move down to the Matthews property on Durf, Durfee and Matthews. Will create from, I think we have eighty jobs now, it'll go up to a hundred and thirty. Will create additional fifty jobs in the community. Will take the sales tax revenue and increase it by fifty percent. I mean, we're, we're, we're suggesting that we're doing twelve or thirteen million in sales. And that we're going to be, according to our market studies, that we're going to be doing in excess of twenty million in sales. We know again that the Matthews property in Greenbelt is probably a couple thousand dollars, and here. We're going to be able to bring in a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. That is now uh, insignificant and it probably a couple thousand in, in Greenbelt. And so um, it's, it's very customary and normal to take an essential service like a grocery store. Uh, I know Walmart was a distribution center. I know there's fifteen years of tax incentives for Walmart, and I know they are creating more jobs than our additional fifty. But uh, I know there are certain, there are certainly incentives for the big guys, so to speak, uh, to be able to, to, to help them out and. And I've been fighting, I think for forty years to uh, help small communities uh, be able to grow. And uh, where there's not going to be a large chain that's interested in a smaller community. But the independent has an opportunity to step in and be able to fill that need. And so um, you know, what we're proposing to you is uh, uh, is that we take this store and uh, we. Uh, close it and then we relocate it and we sell the building and we have people that are interested that we're talking to, very serious about. And uh, double the size of the store, make it a state-of-the-art beautiful store. I hope you've had a chance to go into uh, the Macy's Twilla. Just so you can see what a beautiful remodeled store looks like. Uh, of an independent, it's owned, those are, that Macy's is owned by our four hundred and fifty stores, uh, other than our corporate stores, uh. You know, across ten states, and that's what an independent can provide. If you've seen that Macy's store in Twilla, uh, we're proud of it. And there's, there's no reason that you will be any less disappointed or uh, happy uh, to, and this new store. And so we, we've shared a couple of elevation pictures with you. It's a nineteen million dollar project. Uh, the Solbergs are putting skin in the game uh, to the tune of four million dollars. We're working on an SBA. Uh, uh, five oh four program of five million out of that nineteen million. We've got Alta Bank that has committed. Uh, they've spent three hundred thousand dollars since we met last and doing architect and civil engineering of which you've reviewed and approved as a city. I think i- it's all approved as far as our meeting code and all the requirements. And so uh, then we get down to the permit process and the impact fees. And uh, did we build uh, eighty-eight thousand dollars for permit fees? Yes, we did. Did we uh, anticipate that there would be, which we found out last Friday, the first time, that transportation impact fees. Uh, could approximate four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Now, in twenty twenty-two, we wrote a letter to Jess Wilson and to Attorney Combs and, and the mayor saw that letter that said that. That the Solbergs would need some help, uh, if there's going to be uh, permit and impact fees. Above what would kind of be customary normal and that we would hope to be able to do. A uh, property tax increment and a sales tax increment to help offset, to be able to cover those costs. And so it would be one thing for Dave and Carol and the Solbergs to be coming before you, asking for. And they're agreeing to pay the eighty-eight thousand dollars in the permit fees. We're, we're, we're adjusting our budget to be able to do that. But we're, we're suggesting that the four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars can be covered through the sales and property tax increment that we're going to help create. Uh, by being able to make this investment and going over. Uh, to suggest that we don't have any skin in the game, we being uh, the independent retailer, we being Dave and Carol. Uh, there is a, a very, very significant uh, investment on there. I've asked Carol why she's doing this. Because uh, you know, they asked me, huh, why uh, why shouldn't we be doing this? Shouldn't we be retiring? Why should we be taking a fifteen million dollar loan and uh, five of which is an SBA loan and uh, we have kids in the business and we want to help them, but. Should Dave and I be doing something less stressful than that? And um. I said, most times I uh, advise these retailers not to do it because uh, it's stressful, it's hard. And um, uh. I said, I, I would be less than honest with you if I didn't tell you that uh, that, that, that uh, most people at your retirement age would not be looking to make this investment. Uh, does she want to do it for her kids and her family? Yes. But does she want to do it more for her community? Yes. Dave and Carol, uh, I've been here a hundred and thirty years through the four generations and uh, they're driven by something more than money. It's to be able to bring uh, to Grantsville City, uh, a state-of-the-art, beautiful two thousand twenty-six store with a new hardware store. And uh, I, I. Is that the best for them in their life? Well, according to Dave and Carol, it is because that's what they want to be able to do. And so um, I think it would be uh, uh, easier for us to, to be able to say, you know, let's let somebody else worry about it. And I'd like to tell you that there's people lining up now that Macy's is remodeled and now that Smiths is up in Twilla. Uh, to be able to come into here because if I was on the other side of the table making an argument, I'd say, well, let's just not give them anything. Let's just wait for uh, uh, Smiths to come here. And, and Alsons or uh, you know, uh, Costco or Walmart. And uh, it's just not going to happen. We don't have enough people here. I've, I've been doing this for forty years. The reason that it's an independent retailer is because the chains are not interested in these smaller markets. And if anything, Smith now has to be in a bigger market because they're building a hundred and twenty thousand square foot stores, not fifty-five any longer. When you go have a chance to walk through that store this Saturday, you'll see it's a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. You have to have a lot of people uh, to be able to support that, and so I would suggest to you on behalf of Associated. That, that uh, I'm not going to, if, if Dave and Carol decide, or if you decide that there's no other help here. Uh, that uh, we're just happy with the twenty-five thousand square foot store. I don't think I'm going to be able to sit here and say, well, I'm just going to bring Macy's down here because it doesn't make sense for Macy's to come down here. You know, but it makes sense because they're sitting on twenty-five of the fifty thousand that we can build. And they're willing to close it and be able to relocate it, so they make the most sense to be able to come over. Uh, they've paid their debt off on their store, so they're in a position to take on that debt. If somebody buys their existing store out, they're going to pay all that goodwill uh, for old tired equipment, you know, and, and uh. Uh, I can just give you my assurances that I just am not going to go plug them in with somebody else uh, to be able to come here, and so. Um, you know, we're here because we believe that uh, Solbergs loves this community, uh, that they've served it for a lot of years and, you know, uh, financially, I. I, I'm sure there's a lot of little things that they've done to support the schools and uh, and, and city events, uh. And uh, and they did it with joy, and so um, what I've provided at the request of uh, the mayor and the. And uh, and Michael is uh, kind of a breakdown of, of the piece. Again, here's the site, here's the replacement site that's here. Uh, on the site plan, and then here's an elevation plan of the brand new beautiful store, a little bit different from the one we built thirty-five years ago. Again, it's about forty-six thousand with another about eleven, twelve thousand for the Ace Hardware. And we also have uh, two out parcels that uh, we're uh, trying to be able to market on there, and that's what you see here on the site plan. Uh, as you take a look at the inside of the store and you just kind of see the i- i- interior decor is going to be beautiful. Uh, not that the store right now isn't nice, but uh, you know, the decor's uh, older and this uh, will be a new twenty twenty-six version. With uh, a beautiful uh, colors and coordination on the inside. Um, so Carol and Dave had wrote a letter, if you can go to the next one, that I think we'd shared with the group here. And if I had to summarize the letter, you can go to the next one, there's a handout that you have that is just kind of a, a summary. Uh, of the overall uh, piece that's here and uh. And again, I, I want to pause and be able to say in my forty years, uh, I've worked a lot with CDRA's and assistance for impacts and permit fees. Uh, uh, it, it is, for somebody to say that this is abnormal to uh, assist a, a grocery store. Uh, it's a little harder to do an independent retailer, I'll be honest, when you walk in with a big W or big S, you know, it draws a lot of attention. It's a little harder for the smaller independent to, to maybe uh, have an opportunity to come to the table and say. Hey, if we create uh, a million dollars over the next ten years in sales and property tax, is it unreasonable for us to ask if, can you help us? Uh, with that four hundred and sixty-one thousand in the transportation fee? Uh, if we're still putting up another four million and we're doing an SBA loan for five million and we're doing another fourteen million, you know, on uh, the traditional conventional financing. Uh, are they stepping up and doing their part? I would argue that they are. It's public-private sector. It's a win-win proposition, it creates jobs. It's uh, maybe rewarding somebody that was here for a hundred and thirty years when nobody wanted to be here, other than them. You know, uh, I didn't see the big chains wanting to be here. And you know, there's the, there's the farmer out there that said, you know, I had to subdivide my farm to make place for some people to move. From wherever they're moving from to come here and build their home. Do you, you don't think that that was hard for the farmers back then? Well, can't we do a little bit here and to be able to, you know, help, be able to create some of the, the, the businesses that are essential in the community? And I would argue with you that a grocery store is an essential service, both from what it provides. On two and a half, three trips a week that most people make when they do a grocery store. The jobs that it helps creates for your teenagers and your kids growing up. And it is not out of the norm in my forty years of experience for a city to elect and say, if I can get a sales and property tax increase. I'm willing to share and be able to abate some of those permit and impact fees. The Solbergs have agreed to pay uh, for the permit fees and they're asking on this transportation fee, which by the way, my experience is. Four hundred and sixty-one thousand is enormously high. Uh, Enix, which is a similar sized community that's going to get their first grocery store and Ace Hardware, their total impact and permit fees were two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Of which, three weeks ago, they abated for Lynn's supermarkets uh, as an independent to be able to go into that community. And so uh, if you look at the, at the summary here, um, we're suggesting that the eighty-eight thousand. Uh, that uh, Carol and Dave has said, we'll figure out a way and, and, and Michael uh, suggested a few things. Uh, we, we could, we could eliminate the pylon sign, which is, you know, forty to sixty thousand dollars, and that might help to get to the eighty-eight thousand and. He uh, was uh, you know, very helpful in just saying, well, oh, there's some things you can do, and so. Um, we're, we're prepared to be able to uh, take care of the permit fees that uh, total that eighty-eight thousand. Uh, the four hundred and sixty-one thousand, uh, we're suggesting after talking uh, with Sherry Broadbent and uh. Reviewing over the numbers that uh, our projections of, of uh, over a ten-year period in sales and property tax. The number I had was one point two million. Uh, Sherry said that the uh, the city uh, revenue on the. Property tax increment from Greenbelt at two thousand to a hundred and thirty thousand, the difference being that hundred and twenty-eight thousand. That the city only gets about eleven percent of that, not twenty-two percent. And so if that's correct, if it's, if the city only accrues eleven percent back from there, then our, my numbers that's at a million two is uh, should be at about a million. And I think that's what Michael was referring to, that he's had uh, staff review over uh, the projections uh, that are there, and so. Um, I'm not one to be fluffy and, and, and project uh, sales and property tax revenue dollars that aren't really there. But if you take that million in sales and property tax increment over a ten-year period and you apply that four hundred and sixty-one thousand, that still leaves the city with over a half a million, I think. In this example, before I saw the eleven percent versus the twenty-two on the property tax, we had the number at seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand and. And uh, again, Sherry and I talked uh, this afternoon at about three thirty to kind of walk through uh, that. So with that clarification, that million two is uh, and, and I want to be clear too, that uh, that is also going to the taxing authorities uh, uh. Uh, of the inter-agency groups, it's, it's, it's. It's, 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 it's just not the benefit to the city. There's also part of that million dollars is a, a benefit to the school district and the other taxing entities that receive property tax. However, the sales tax revenue piece, which is a big portion there, uh, that, that is uh, you know, really a hundred percent of that increment is going back to the city. So um uh if you want to go to that last page on there, it just kind of shows uh the uh dollar amount uh on the invoice uh that I think uh uh the, the city had sat down. And I, and I, you know, I'm sure that you haven't done a lot of these because there's only been one grocery store built here and it was thirty five years ago. And so, but uh uh that is the dollar amount, that five forty nine eighty eight thousand is the permit fees and that's uh four sixty one is the uh, is the uh transportation impact fees uh on there. Um, I guess, you know, with, with, uh, with that background, I, I'm happy to open it up. I, I, I'll make another point. I, when we came here three years ago, there was no master plan for a commercial retail center in the city. I asked a question, um, if, if we can't go on Main Street on the Matthews property, out of respect for the family not wanting to sell that Main Street property, if you recall, uh, where do you want us to go? Where does the city want to master plan their commercial retail? And uh, and I, you know, and I get it. I, I'm not, I'm not being judgmental, but I'm, I'm saying that there was not a master plan to address commercial retail for the next ten years. And let alone replace the Grantsville uh Solbergs store here and go somewhere else. Because when we talked about that somewhere else, it was out on the highway. It was on the Romney property. It was uh on, on the other side of the city, so to speak, and uh it was out towards where the new interchange was going to go. And yeah, coming into the city, there's a bunch of land out here on the fringe. And Carol and Dave said, I want to be in the city. And if you learn one thing about what blights the city is, lose your retail to big box stores at the end of town. At the far end of Cedar City with Walmart or on the far north end. Uh, but you know, we're still anchoring Lins downtown, you know, there. And so you don't want to lose your grocery anchor and put them out on the fringe or put them out in the unincorporated area or in the county. You, you really want to keep them there. And so I hope that one of the things that you see as a benefit is that we donated with the help of Matthews, thirty five thousand square feet to widen Matthews and to uh improve Durfee. Um, uh, we're going to pay uh for the cost to put the curb uh and gutter, uh, excuse me, the, the sidewalks in off of Durfee and, and do all the access points coming in from Durfee and Matthews. Also on the new street that's on the backside, we donated some land uh to be able to have that street in, uh, you know, to finish it off. And so um uh you've helped us. Obviously, there was the, the water uh share issue and uh there um was help in uh Matthews. I hope that you don't see Matthews as exclusively a Solbergs benefit. I hope you look, and this is my point I was trying to make here a second ago, is that you've now created a master plan, commercial retail center that you can grow as the community grows and you have a designated zone in an area to be able to not only have the grocery store, which by the way, is the largest uh creator of traffic on a weekly basis. Uh, it'll be twelve to fifteen trips uh a week that will come to this site. That's what attracts other retailers, you know, out parcels and inline retail shop space. And so um I, I think the Matthews widening was a benefit uh for our project because we couldn't find a place to go on Main Street that was four or five acres or eight acres in this case. And that I think will help you anchor a master plan development for the next ten or fifteen years. And, you know, we're proud to be that anchor and be that participant. So I, I, I think with that, uh, you know, uh, maybe explanation and outline, and I, I didn't intend to stand up to be defensive of the public hearing of the comments that were made because I know they were genuine. I know that everybody wants lower property taxes and the lowest cost of housing and they, they uh, they want essential services close by. Uh, but you know, sometimes you can't have unless you're in a monopoly area like maybe Park City and Sun Valley and resort areas where you don't have to uh sit there and, and maybe fight for your sales and property tax and your, and your economic development for your, your growth in, in creating jobs. So I think that's my uh, uh, hopefully a response to maybe some of the public comments that were made earlier. Again, emphasizing that public and private sector is very important and has been and always will be for uh uh um progressive uh government entities on there. So let me pause and then answer questions that you might have for me.
Got a couple of things I'd like to bring up. They mentioned the uh taxes going up really high in our, in our community. I'm just going to reemphasize this. We are the third lowest taxing rate in this county. Okay, uh, there's something that a lot higher than we are. Most of your property taxes increases uh are not because of Grantsville City. Now, I'm just going to bring Arby's up here for a few minutes.
But hey, Mayor, why don't you just elaborate on, on, on what the increases were, just so everyone can understand?
You got school district, county, you have every, there's, there's a lot of people that are involved with with taking tax money out of us. Uh, but Grantsville City's portion of your property taxes have gone down every year for sixteen years. Okay, just so everybody understands that. Now, Arby's. Arby's is going to generate, well, from that lot down there that is, was, Arby's is sitting on, collected less than a thousand dollars a year property taxes. Okay, total. With the new building on there, they're going to generate about twenty five thousand dollars in taxes. We're going to get about seventy thousand dollars in sales tax. So from a thousand dollars, that building down there is going to be worth to the taxing, to the people of this community, about ninety five thousand dollars this next year for a year. Okay? It's just really hard for me to, to listen to people that are, they just don't understand the picture that needs to happen here. If you have a, your current store isn't large enough, not even close. Needs to be a larger store. If it's a larger store, it generates more sales tax and it's going to generate more property tax. And we've been getting two thousand dollars a year from the, from the girls on Greenbelt and now it's going to go up to how much?
Hundred and thirty.
Hundred and thirty thousand. Okay, not all of it comes to Grantsville, but it goes to your school kids and to the county. And those things are there. And then anything else besides on the sales tax that comes out of this is addition to what they have. Now, the store down there is not going anywhere. No, we're still going to get property taxes from that. Anybody that moves in there will get taxes, sales tax, whatever taxes we can do out of that. This is an opportunity for us to uh take care of, if you, if you, the cost of doing business. If you have, if the cost of doing business is, is really high, you have to charge more for the product. That's the way that works in America, I guess. Uh, but uh if you can lower those costs, then the lower, the cost will come down. Arby's in the next five years, we're just going to generate about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in sales tax. That's a huge thing to our community. And, you know, I took a lot of beating over why we don't, why we have one of those on there. They didn't want it on every corner. Well, they're not on every corner, but that's what that produces. Okay? The same thing's going to happen up here. And the part that we didn't, on Matthews Lane, there's going to be, that's going to be the, the key to dr- driving people to Matthews Lane so that we can have a recent retail corridor. But the property taxes that we're asking is for the improvement on Durfee Street. Because this is what it costs us. It costs us more than we're asking to do Burton, to do uh Durfee Street because we needed to do it. It had to be done. Okay, so. I just, it's a little frustrating to me to listen to the, to the negatives and to think that we're just trying to do something just for a, a grocery store. But there's a lot of things that are going to come because of that grocery store and the taxes and the fees that we're going to get. And we're not asking them to waive public safety or any of those things. They're going to pay those things. But it's just this transportation impact, so, okay, off my own horse. You guys have any questions?
I'll ask a question. Yeah, please go ahead. The first one. Um, you, you mentioned, I mean, your presentation is, I think we all, so we, we've, we've had you in here before, you talked to us. You mentioned that you, you started out on this journey three and a half years ago. So tell me, when did you, when did it finally dawn on, on you and in the group that um there was a transportation impact fee for Grantsville City and what the amount was? I mean?
Yeah, yeah, fair, fair question. Uh, Friday is when we got the invoice.
Obviously.
And uh, and so uh I think we uh budgeted the eight, close to eighty eight thousand, seventy five thousand probably of the eighty eight. Um, on the um transportation fee, we assumed that the uh CDRA between the sales and property tax increment program was going to help uh, you know, be able to provide that, which is what's happening in Enoch. Uh, what, what's made it challenging for municipalities is that uh Governor Cox was trying to figure out how to do an affordable housing uh piece, or the legislature, I should say, uh, component. And so one of the things that they added is House Bill one fifty one in twenty twenty four that said uh if you're going to have a sales or property tax increment, then you have to uh bring a, a, affordable housing piece. At the time, the Matthews were working with two developers and that developer didn't happen and the other developer didn't happen. And then I think we had a discussion with the city and the mayor about that there could be some credits uh that you can do with uh other developments uh for those uh pieces on there. Uh, but uh that didn't come to fruition. And so um, I mean, we didn't just wake up on Friday and, and say, oh, we just, you know, we just missed in the budget. We just assumed that the sales and property tax increment program was going to help be able to fund if there was going to be a transportation impact fee and then it would, it go, it would be from there. So we just, it's not like we just dropped the ball. If you look at the twenty twenty, August thirtieth, twenty twenty two letter uh to Mr. Combs and Jess Wilson, you'll see that on page two, it specifically talks about the permit and impact fees being addressed as part of that uh sales and property tax uh uh CDRA. Uh, yeah, fair question.
But I, I guess the question is, when did you realize that it was ten thousand? Uh, ten thousand four hundred and eighty four dollars and eighty six cents per thousand feet?
Friday.
Friday was the first time?
Friday.
You know when that changed?
Help me, Mike.
It changed earlier this year. I, I'm just, yeah, I mean, it did change this year. I mean, we had, we had a meeting on that in August. We discussed it quite extensively and I can't remember whether I said it in the meeting or if I said it to one of you afterwards, that that number was going to certainly affect Solbergs because the single largest retail building that will be built in the town um in the near future. So, yeah, the math's there, right?
Yeah, in my, my historical experience in a, a market that's under thirty thousand people that has a single store in town that's twenty five thousand square feet is nothing approximating four hundred and sixty one thousand dollars in a transportation impact fee. Uh, Enoch's my perfect example. Three weeks ago, uh, the total uh transportation impact fee and permits were two hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars.
And I, I understand that. So, I mean, you, you did mention, I mean, Associated, you said four hundred and eighty stores.
Yes.
So you, you, you keep bringing up the Enoch store, but what other areas, I mean?
Oh, Twilla, we did it in Twilla with Macy's. Yeah, I mean, that's, uh, we, we uh, we're, we would not have been able to go in. In that time, it was Ken Macy and he was the independent retailer. And uh, uh, that's the second example. I'm, I'm trying to think Providence is the third example uh where we were in Logan and we had the old store on the, on the V, if you know where that's at, and we went Kitty Corner and we, that happened to be Providence and Providence uh did an RDA with us uh over a five year period. And that's, 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 uh, you know, and I, I, I'm probably not thinking of, you know, all the other ones that we've gone through, but they're, they're, they're significant.
So I guess what I'm, what I'm kind of uh leaning towards is, I mean, you obviously didn't wake up on Friday, come to a meeting and get this invoice and say, oh, well, we got to address this four hundred and forty eight thousand dollars. Um, why wasn't that addressed earlier with the city? And really, why wasn't that in your budget, I guess, is, I guess it's?
Because then our budget is also the CDRA on the uh, on the credit down uh there for help be, between the property and sales tax increase that was there to help offset that. So it's not as though we, we just don't know what we're doing.
I, I understand.
I, I mean, we probably do ten stores a year and, uh, you know, and so, uh, but did we have four hundred and sixty one thousand in transportation fee? No, did we have seventy five, eighty thousand for the size of a Grantsville community for the, the permit fees? Yes, we did. And, and uh I think we've, you know, s- s- sets during that time that, that we'll, we'll, we'll pay that. You know, we'll, we'll, we'll figure out we can make that happen. I can't make, I can't make up four hundred and sixty one thousand dollars, so. A- and especially when there's uh, there's not been. A- and again, I, I think Cameron with the League of Cities said that I think there's, there, there's still a pathway here. But, you know, uh, we got all into the discussion of Matthews and how to pay for Matthew Street and, and so um uh, it, it, it didn't happen. I mean, the, the, the CDRA for the sales and property increment to help pay for the transportation impact fee, if there were going to be one, is where that would have come from. So you're right that we didn't wake up on Friday and said, gosh, we're just not very good at doing this budget stuff.
But I, I will say this, I'll tell you what did happen is um this council did um have the vision and the foresight to put in that road so that you could do this, right? Because if we not, you, you would be, we would be talking today, right?
No, we would have, we would have, we would have actually built on Durfee uh without Matthews widened. Uh, and we would have moved forward. Does it help your master development? Probably not. It doesn't, to, to me, uh, and by the way, I had goosebumps like last week when I came for Twilla's opening and I came there and I saw Matthews widened. I mean, that was, that, that's, that's a beautiful road. Uh. And it, again, I think it anchors a commercial retail strategy for the city long term.
Well, absolutely. That's why we did it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, I'm, yeah. So just so you're aware, and I'm not trying to, you know, fight over semantics, but we just didn't wake up yesterday and didn't know that the property taxes were going to increase and we were going to gain that. We didn't wake up yesterday and think, oh, well, if Solbergs is going to double in size, then there's going to be more sales tax revenue. That was all a part of the suit. That's discussions that we've had.
Sure, sure.
In this meeting in an open forum to be able to justify the uh, the investment that we made on Matthews Lane. That was all a part of it. And the impact fees that were going to be collected from that was a part of that as well. So.
And I'll share with you that the, the twenty twenty two letter, when we sat down and said, is this something we can do together? Uh, you know, included in there, that CDRA component to be able to help us it, it, you know, with, with the cost uh between the permit and the impact fees. And, you know, the uh, the other pieces were in there. So, and, you know, hopefully we've made some contribution too, you know, with the, the thirty five thousand square feet of land to be able to help on the widening and, and uh.
Yeah, so I just, I mean, going back and, and, and hindsight's always twenty twenty, right? But don't you think that the twenty twenty two letter that you're referring to should have been maybe revisited when this body made the move to be able to allow you to, to uh, to build on that corner?
Most cities don't have a four hundred and sixty one thousand dollar ask in a population of twenty five thousand people. And so, we're, we're, can I be honest with you?
I just wish you would have come to us.
Yeah, I know. I, I, no, I, I'll take responsibility for saying, hey, uh, uh, you know, let's, let's, let's get in there and revisit it. I mean, you know, uh, but, but I mean, it was discussed. We, we had conference calls uh on the CDRA with uh Attorney Coombs and Jess Wilson uh to discuss the CDRA and we had it actually in part of the development agreement originally with Matthews and the city. And so I, I, I didn't wake up Friday and uh, you know, create this, but I will be honest with you. Uh, was I extremely surprised at a four hundred and sixty one thousand dollar transportation impact fee on a population area where there's only one store that's twenty five thousand square feet that's thirty five years old? Yeah, I was not anticipating that.
That CDRA uh would have taken place, but the Matthews girls decided not to build four hundred and sixty houses in there. Because that's what it would have taken to make this all happen.
Yeah, I mean, they, they had their challenges and uh the residential piece, I think they were working on.
Yeah, and so they pulled that off the table, which was, on the CDRA and.
But yeah, I'll, I mean, I'd certainly take some responsibility for saying, hey, uh, uh, we, we, we can, you know, uh, can you start giving us an idea of what that uh transportation impact fee is going to be? And uh, you just to know that we don't have any boogeyman in the. And uh, you just to know that we don't have any boogeyman in the closet on the one yard line when we're literally uh, you know, and again, we've, we've spent three hundred thousand dollars in architect and engineering fees. We've uh gone through the city review and approval process, and we've gone through banking uh and SBA, you know, for the financing piece. So uh I, I, those are the surprises we don't like either. So I, I, I share that with you.
I just think assumptions were made and, and really, it was this council, I believe it was last October, November, that decided that we'd invest in that area and, and make it more of a master planned um, community area for, for commercial. And um, I just think it would have been better in the, the, the couple of times that we've met since then with you, which we have met. None of that was brought up ever. It would have been nice to, to bring that up, and we would have been on the fifteen yard line and
Yeah.
And now we're on the one and you don't wanna get sacked and, and maybe we don't want you to kick a field goal.
I, I'll absolutely take some responsibility for uh, uh, not, uh, Michael discussed that as well. He said, you know, in the transition between Jesse and he, they he didn't have, you know, visit, he, he, I don't know if he'd even seen the letter, you know, that was, was there. And so there were some transitions in the uh administrative group that I, I think intellectual capital on the project probably didn't get passed through, but uh I will be the first to take some responsibility to say that uh we could have talked about this earlier. When you had passed those changes, if you anticipated that, hey, uh, this might be a uh four hundred and sixty thousand dollar uh hit, you know, to the, the proposed project, that would have uh, a- and I'm not saying it's your responsibility to have to reach out to the applicant, but it, when maybe that significant transportation impact fee uh approval was done, and you knew that we were trying to maybe put the whole project together, that uh, that, that, hey, by the way, uh yeah, I don't know if this will affect uh the financing for the project.
Yeah, so for complete transparency with that, the, the increases that were, that happened in August um were not a huge increase.
Okay.
The, the transportation fee impact was nine thousand and some change.
Yeah.
I mean, we essentially increased it by around ten percent, maybe eleven percent.
Gotcha.
And, and the majority, if I remember the discussions we had, the majority of that, and just for, for, for sheer understanding and and transparency, I believe the engineer um has built in to that impact fee um rate, the widening of Sheeplane. And I remember us having multiple discussions as to why that number was so high, and I think that's, that, that's, that's a portion of why it is.
That is correct, right? Why, why it's so high is because of Matthews Lane?
No.
I, I mean, Sheeplane, sorry.
Sheeplane is owned by Grantsville City.
Yes.
But I thought we removed that.
No, we didn't.
From.
What?
We, we, we haven't removed it yet. It's in the process of doing that. I've asked Robert to go through an analysis to remove that, and then that will readjust these impact.
Sheeplane is still on there.
Okay.
And it's significant. Well, that's the lion's share. The reason why that particular fee is what it is.
Correct.
So can anybody give us a, an answer as to if you, Michael's saying that we're trying to remove Sheeplane from our transportation impact fee analysis, right, for each building? What would the difference then be? If Sheeplane was removed, do you know what the difference would be?
They're getting that number for me, and so that should be here in the next week or two. The timeframe is what they're trying to get that down on.
But irregardless of that, I mean, you're asking for the, the fee to be completely waived, a hundred percent.
The, the transportation impact.
So regardless if that's cut in half or cut to twenty-five percent, it's not something that that you or Dave and Carol are willing to, to pay in it.
I don't know if it's not a willing, it's, it's a matter of uh, it's, yeah.
I understand.
You, you keep mentioning that the store in Enoch, which I appreciate the examples from the other cities.
Sure.
Um, and you mentioned that their um impact fees were around two fifty, is that correct?
Two hundred fifty-seven thousand.
So would, would you have expected the impact fees to be very similar here?
Well, no, because uh city manager, uh Rob Dotson and the city council had already established a CDRA and had agreed in a letter to us that they would uh waive those.
Okay, so our transportation fee, what was their transportation fee of the two hundred fifty, whatever thousand?
Jared, you wanna look that up? Uh, uh, the, the, uh, the city sent that to us uh and they'll have it broken out on there, so he can give you exactly what that is. And I think I forwarded it to Michael. In fact, uh, you might have for me, uh, Enoch City's uh permit and impact fees uh would have been one of my early emails that I sent over, cause uh, Michael asked the same question. And Jared, see if you can find out if you.
All right, my question is, you mentioned the city helping you with water. Did we, as a city, waive the water requirements for Silver's?
We did that.
The M D A. The, the property waived that.
Waived the water requirements. Okay, so we've waived the water requirements for you. Um. Um, and then I, I guess, I, I think there's probably a way to break down cause I, I, I do still get hung up on this because it cost us about three and a half million dollars to do Matthews Lane, and that, that was infrastructure, that was sewer, that was water, that was widening this.
Sewer was already there, the water line and the asphalt curbing gutter and sidewalk.
Right.
About two million, cause we had about a million in grants.
Right, but I mean, the cost of it, I, it doesn't matter if it was, anyway. Like, I mean, we, we took a five million dollar bond and three and a half of that went to this, right?
Yes, but some other parts of this project.
Right. And I know that not all of that is, I, I mean, the widening of Matthews Lane, that is going to benefit Silver's, but it will benefit other businesses also. And I, and I get the vision. Um, but I, I don't know, like, if there were some way to break, like, from this property to this, this is how much it costs to do this length of the road. This is how much it costs to do this much of the sewer. This is how much, and also on Durfee. Um, and then there is that, that back road, I don't know what you wanna call it, that was also that will contribute to Silver's as far as getting trucks in and out um that the city also paid for. Um.
And then we, we dedicated some land for that widening back there, and that it would benefit uh Durfee as it expands to the west on the other side.
And then, but then we, we've also um, we've given a little bit as far as um like, lessened how much, didn't we take out, you didn't have to have sidewalk on a certain part, like on the back part? Or what did we, what change did we make so that the sidewalk would meet?
Allowed us to have the parking that we needed in the front, but we eliminated a pad. We lost one of the pads cause we had to move the site forward, and when we did that, we weren't gonna meet our parking ratio requirement, and so we eliminated the pad. But as a result of that, uh, we didn't do a sidewalk there in the back, so it could work for you folks and it could work for us too.
Yeah. So.
That's correct.
I, I guess what I'm kind of looking at, and, and let me just preface this, that I, I see the vision as far as, I see the vision of the commercial district there. And I, and I, I appreciate Silver's for all that they've done for our community and that they are an important part of our community. Um, but looking at this not at an emotional level or not at but looking at it more at a business level, I feel that the city has contributed quite a bit towards the success of Silver's. And there, there has to be kind of a point where we, we kinda had to draw a line and say, we, we can only contribute. I mean, we, we waived water requirements, we've invested in infrastructure there to help. Um, and, and these are all things that impact our city as a whole. Um, and, and I think that those yeah, I, I mean, I'll, I'll say even from the beginning, I, I voted against that because I, I wanted to have Silver's contribute a little bit more towards that. And so it frustrates me a little bit to then have this again come up. Well, okay, you've done this, 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 now can you also waive this? Um, because I, I do agree with some of the comments that were made. Um. It, it, it is easy to look at and say, okay, right now it's green belt, and look at how much it will increase with Silver's, et cetera. And I agree with that, but you also have to look at that Silver's is currently a part of contributing to Grantsville. Uh, I'd like, I, I think the calculation should be to what is Silver's currently generating in, in sales tax and compare it to that versus comparing it to green belt to what it's going to be now. Um. Uh, like, I ju- I just don't know that it, the benefits outweigh the expense.
So what's the difference in sales tax project?
Yeah, I mean, uh, Winco is uh talking across the street from Macy's right now. So, you know, if we think that the only effect, when I say we, I'm talking about how it's gonna hurt Silver's, but also what hurts Silver's hurts the city. And uh if Winco applies across the street from Macy's and we now have uh Smiths and then Winco, um, we're gonna lose another ten or fifteen percent, you know, and so I I, I mean, if I'm sitting at the other side of the, the table here, uh yeah, maybe two thousand dollars in green belts, okay, and, and you're eleven percent of whatever that increment is and much, but that sells taxes a lot of dollars. But I, I, I promise you, other municipalities, in this case, Twill is more than happy to continue uh to be able to receive that. And, and the argument might beg be, well, just because Silver's doesn't come, doesn't mean somebody else will. But I'm suggesting to you that it's not gonna be Smiths, it's not gonna be Kroger, it's not gonna be Walmart, it's for your distribution center. And it's not gonna be another independent retailer for a period of time. If that's okay, then, you know, then I, you know, then you, you, I think you'd take that position on there, but, but if you can create uh those incremental sales and property tax dollars, and it's not hurting, you know, uh, your, your situation on the budget, that's what economic development on a partnership between private and public is, i- is where it's a win-win. I mean, otherwise, there would be no uh economic development programs or SBA five oh fours, you know, for the incentives. It's a lower interest rate, it's amortized over twenty-five years, and it helps small businesses be able to come in communities like this and be able to, 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 to build a store that you see that a Smiths or uh that a Macy's can build. It's the same architect that, you know, builds our Macy's stores that would be building, you know, they'd be doing, that did the architecture on this, so. Uh, and I, I don't want that to come across as a threat, but I mean, you know, the option of saying, okay, well, we'll uh we'll just, we'll just hang tight. And I, I think almost uh the Jeffries would probably make more money if they don't do this investment initially for the first five years. I think that they would be better off, and they'll grow with the community and have the store. I wish we could expand it out to the left or the right-hand side, but there's not enough parking. Even if we have enough building, i- i- as you know, you can go around the left-hand side as you face the building. Can't go around the right-hand side, cause you know, Mike Colson's retail shop spaces, uh, you know, that he has all over there on that side. We've, we've looked at it. It would be much cheaper for us just to remodel this store and knock out ten thousand square feet, but uh we don't have enough parking.
So are you implying then that if these fees are not waived, that this will not happen?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, uh, yeah, right now, uh, we're, we're, we're figuring out how to take care of the eighty-eight thousand. I don't know, I don't know if I can say no, but um, we had that talk at five-thirty at Carol's house tonight. And um money's just really not there because uh the, the, we, we thought in sales and property tax increment, it, it would be there, so. But I'm not gonna tell you, no, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna tell you that it's an all or nothing thing, because I don't wanna come across threatening. But uh three and a half years is a long time, and I think they're tired. I think we're in the end zone here almost, because we've got Alta Bank, we've got SBA. We've got the city approvals, we spent three hundred thousand dollars, hopefully showing our good faith that we wanted to go forward only to have this problem on the one yard line. It's not what you know, we anticipated, or we wanna spend three hundred thousand dollars on doing architect and civil engineering plans on there, but I don't wanna sit here and uh put a threat out that, hey, if you don't just give us, but I'm, I'm, we're in it, we're stuck in a, a spot right now. And uh we'll take some responsibility for not talking about the letter, you know, sooner and maybe having you guys after your meeting you had in August, uh, approximate what transportation impact fees might be. We're fully prepared to pay all the permit fees, and uh we don't have a path right now for the transportation impact amount that uh was identified on Friday, and it was a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in Enoch on the transportation uh allocation of the, of the two fifty-seven. So out of the two fifty-seven, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, and it's a, it's actually a little bigger project than this, uh, not by much. But it's three pads versus two, uh, a little larger acreage than what we have here, but it's substantially the building and the hardware's the, the same size.
And this is a hard one for me, sorry. I was just gonna say, like, kind of final sentiments, like, cause right now Grantsville City is our budget, what is the exact term, where our budget is in deficit? Is that what the term is? Our, this year, our budget is in deficit? Is that what we call it? And this year for our budget, we've asked all of our departments to tighten their belts. We're like, we've gotta scrimp, we gotta tighten our belts, we've gotta make that dollar stretch. And it's hard for me to, to do that to Grantsville City and then turn around and say, well, let's waive this, you know, cause I get it, it's, it's hard for you guys, but I'm saying Grantsville and our citizens also, we've gotta make those ends meet too. And so it's, it's a hard decision to make because I know of the potential benefit, but then also there's that risk there too. So that's all, that's the last I'll say. Maybe.
You guys have anything else you wanna say?
Were, were you gonna say something?
No, I'll, let's talk.
I, I did have a question regarding the square footage. I'm just trying to run some numbers here.
Sure.
Um, this says forty-six thousand five twenty-one, the numbers I've got. If I'm running all the numbers together, I come up with forty-eight thousand oh seventy-seven.
Plus the ace.
Yes, plus the ace. So this calculation that we've got here is forty-four thousand. So if I had, based on this, the invoice that was issued out, forty, uh, forty-four thousand square feet, we add another four thousand oh seventy-seven of office, and then you have the, I'm just wondering where the, I'm just, I got a discrepancy I'm trying to figure out in my mind.
Because offices.
The op, yeah, and the office is separated, and the warehouse is separated, but I'm not getting the same retail square footage as.
The footprint from uh the civil engineering uh A W A is forty-six thousand. Uh, well, that, you've, it's on that site plan that was approved by the city. It's, that's still the same uh, 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 site plan. On there, you wanna go back to that site plan, it'll have, and you should have an exhibit on there, uh, on what the square footage is, plus the ace. And then in addition to that, there's two pads, so there is.
Fifty-eight thousand two hundred and thirty square feet.
If you could go over the building, yeah.
Forty-six, eight eighty-two is grocery.
Right. And then uh eleven thousand three forty-eight is the hardware, so. Right, and then uh eleven thousand, three forty-eight is the hardware, so.
Now, is the ace hardware, is that a for sure thing?
Yeah, it's it's been fully engineered, it's part of the building, it's actually one building.
And is it franchised or is it?
It's the same as uh Ace is a uh. Uh cooperative as well, they have fifty-four hundred stores in all fifty states and uh. Uh Solberg's are, is a uh member or franchisee.
So would they be able to contribute?
Uh they are, they're they're contributing about seven hundred thousand dollars in inventory.
I mean, to pay the bills.
That's part of it.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 that's, yeah.
The total square footage is the fifty-eight, two thirty. Yeah, but the two buildings, well, one bit.
And then you've got the two hats, obviously, additional uh. I was interested in the mayor said what the thinks the property taxes might be on that Arby's, because you know, it could very well be. Another uh fast food on one of the out parcels.
But you're not asking to waive any fees on those two parcels.
Let me just say, I uh, you know, without looking back at Dave and Carol. Um, if this is an all or nothing thing, I mean uh. It's tough for you and it's tough for us because uh, uh you know, we're three hundred thousand dollars into this and you're. Three and a half million, I know it's not all for us on the wide net Matthews, but uh, I mean, if there is uh. Some number in addition to the eighty-eight thousand that you want us to try to be able to show some good faith to to try to get there. Um, I'll do everything I can, because you know, we're. Uh it's not like uh we don't have anything into this project at this point, we've we've closed on. You know, a million and a half dollars worth of land, we we closed on three hundred thousand, yeah. I I mean, you say, well, we're we're good, we're donated land or the. You know, the 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 water shares and uh we've done the widening Matthews, and so I know you've made some commitments, so I'm not. Here to say that it's a one-way tr- you know, streak, if there's something that that uh we need to do to figure out how to get to that piece. Um, I don't wanna uh go for a vote and say it's an all or nothing and then. And Carol said, well, we're done, you know, we'll we'll lead to three hundred thousand and we can always do something with the land. I don't think that's a problem, nothing. Land never gets less expensive, it, you know, it'll it'll get there, so we uh we've talked about it. About if we have to uh, you know, have the land and and do something else and. Uh we would uh absorb the three hundred thousand as a a lesson and, you know, we're doing, but I I I don't wanna go there, I wanna, I wanna. Uh truly say that if there's something that you think will get both of us there, I'm committed to going back and having that discussion to. Yeah, I mean, truth of the matter is, we we have more than three hundred thousand, we have switch gears and some things on that side. If you've been out to the site, we actually do. Uh we don't have the notice proceed cuz we don't have the financing contingency satisfied because of this issue on the impact fee. And so that's why, uh but I, you know, I I can tell you that. This is probably the remaining issue for us to have a contingency financing discussion re- resolved and uh. We think that we'll sign loan documents and have a notice of proceed. And it's been a hard Thanksgiving for the Jeffries because uh, because partly our fault. We'll take responsibility, we didn't anticipate a, that number on there, but I'm gonna own it, that we should have talked earlier. Which was Michael's point, by the way, he brought that up a week ago Friday that. You know, since he took over from Jesse, that uh, you know, that he wasn't privy to the letter and the discussions about the CDRA to help. On waiving some of the permit and impact fees.
I I just have a couple of comments. Um, I guess for the council, not necessarily for you. So, no, you can stay there, no, I'm not trying to kick you out. My comment is. Um, we know that Lakeview Business Park has several um. Major companies looking to locate there. And we know that our transportation fee is high, and so it feels like. This is going to become an ongoing discussion. Um, that these larger buildings um. Getting stuck with this enormous. Transportation fee, I mean, you know that if something started, a a big project, a million square foot building started at. The Lakeview Business Park um or the areas on the other side of town. That we would be getting the same discussion, right? I mean, just.
Yeah, but it'd be only nine cents.
Because it's a warehouse, and so it seems like. It seems like maybe we need, this just needs to be. I guess. Thought through maybe just a little bit differently for a very large building compared to. Is, am I crazy? Is that?
No, you're not crazy, but we had the discussion, I mean, we didn't just approve it, we talked about that, I don't know if.
Right.
I don't know if it resonated with with everyone in the room, but the the number of three point. Basically, three dollars and thirty cents uh um a square foot. Per thousand square foot building. So that's, that's, sorry, that's three point two nine, three point three peak hour trips rates, the impact fee at ten thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars. Per thousand square foot retail space. I mean, we did just barely go over this, and it's not like it was. Like we, like we times it by nine or something, I mean, it was ten percent more than what we had before. And when it was changed before, we weren't on the council then, so I don't know when it was changed to where it was, you know, in July. But it wasn't, it wasn't ten thousand, but it wasn't two.
Yeah.
Uh there's not a lot of businesses that have come into Grantsville that are retail space. That we would have been able to know or would have resonated or whatever, um, you know, just. We don't have that, that opportunity, this, this is something.
And I would say ten thousand square feet. Ten, for ten thousand dollars for a thousand square foot for retail is probably a right price for a. A thousand square feet, so that's why I was wondering, like, wh- what multipliers come into play? Should we, you know, should should we look at a multiplier for a higher volume building? So, anyway.
Yeah, if you had a retail space that was twenty-five hundred square feet, would it be out of the realm possibly to request that business? To pay an impact fee for transportation of twenty-five thousand dollars, probably not. But when you're talking on a scale of times forty, that adds up pretty, pretty quick, right? It's into big numbers, and it does, I think we all agree, it is going to affect transportation.
Absolutely.
That's why we built the road, right?
Right.
I mean, that's why we widened it, that's why we requested really ultimately from the other side of the street. To allow us to to build that other fifteen extra feet, so that we could do it right the first time.
Yes.
And and I think we all feel good that it has been done right the first time, so.
Okay, so now, I I guess now we should go back to his last question. Is there a middle ground here? Is there somewhere we can meet in the middle? Is this an all or nothing? What are our thoughts on that? Jeff, what do you think?
I'm just sitting there thinking, what's the win-win? I I think it's gotta be a win-win for both sides, so um.
So, Michael, can you and Aspen talk about the Durfee Street and the impact fees and the. Things that are involved there, you wanna go through that?
Um, yeah, yes. You haven't heard Aspen, this is Aspen, and to to correct an error earlier, I think um. Steve was actually talking to Aspen earlier today, not sharing. Okay, okay, so I know there was some confusion on that, so.
Not a problem. Not a worry.
So there is uh two routes to go, cuz if we, if the council does decide to waive the impact fees tonight. There is a a statutory provision that the city has to account for that impact fee itself. And put that money in an impact fee way, so if you say we're waving uh ten thousand. Or a hundred thousand dollars in impact fee, we now have to go find in the budget where that's gonna come out of. And so if you decide to waive the entire amount, we're gonna have to come up someplace in our city budget where we're gonna put that towards that. Uniquely here, we have a a situation where in our impact fee list, we have uh the Durfee Street. And Matthew Street, but more specifically here, the Durfee Street. Amount to to do this construction on that area of Durfee Street and the impact fee eligibility cost. Is around six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, higher than what they're asking for, so we've already paid. We've said we paid for this road, in essence, we're contin- we're closing out that final bill, and so. The one way we would do it is, we would say, okay, we're going to take the money we have paid for this road, the. The three point three million dollars, and we're gonna say we're gonna offset what we paid by that. Using this Durfee impact fee, and so the city could in and of itself waive the entire amount. And not have to have it affect any more addition to our current budget, aside from what we've already paid out. On the Durfee Street, Matthew Street project of that three point three million dollars. So it wouldn't hit our budget in any sort of way like it would in some other projects in this case, because this street was on our. Our our improvement system in this way, so it puts the city in a very unique position where it isn't going to hit us financially. Another way, so basically, we would just do a line item, an adjustment with our auditor. And then we would be where we were at, and then we could start collecting all of the additional. Fees and costs that are coming through the taxes and the increment, uh taxation, correct me if I'm wrong in any of that.
That's accurate, but yeah, and I would. Recommend a route such as this, which this is a unique situation that just happens to be like. A line for this project specifically because we do have that Durfee Street project, which was directly correlated with. Developing that property, um I don't think that would be a situation we come across frequently. But it would be a better alternative than saying using the increase in sales tax revenue or property tax revenue. That goes into our general fund, which we would then have to take out of our general fund, transfer to our impact fee fund, which would then be using. I, you know, that's. It would be an option as a council to do that, I just don't think that it would look great if we went that route.
Understood. Thank you for the option, I think we're all concerned about the budget, right?
Absolutely.
And I think Councilwoman Jenkins brought up some some unique points. Um, about how we've tried to stretch our daughter dollar and we don't really want. A decision like this to affect our budget and affect our police department and our parks and rec and our public works and we could go on and on, our library. So.
But there, he is right, though, that the other two pads there uh that would come in. You, we could decide not to waive any of those, and now that we're on the front end of that and know our fees and hopefully that our adjustment in our. Our fees, once we get those from the Robert, then those people would be aware coming into that, what those impact fees would be and. That at that point, we'll have the the discussion right up front on what they're gonna do with those. And when they do build those kind of buildings coming forward, if that's the case, but again, I think the council's in a u- unique position because of. The Durfee Street Road, that it would not impact any further than it's already has with the building of the road. Cuz we're gonna have that cost regardless, that this would not impact the budget in any way, that way.
Thank you. Questions? Jeff?
Now, I um. I just, I just, what's weird, I guess, um. I don't think we can. We're just as tired talking about girl businesses as as anything for the community, and I think this council's been pretty good. Um to have that vision of businesses um. Um, so this, the this issue, I think it, my worry is just the precedence. Precedence it sets for other businesses, and so I can agree with Heidi that. This takes a little work on our part to decide what. I think multiple businesses will come to us asking for fees waived. I think we discussed this a little bit when we discussed the impact fees, so I think we just need to have a. Universal decision, a uh. Standard, I I don't, I'm not thinking of the right word on the spot, but of what we're going to do to support our businesses, so. Um, I don't know that we have that tonight, I don't know if I'm smart enough to think of that tonight, but I think it's important.
Jeff, if I may chime in just a little bit on that, so there's uh um. A- as as part of the analysis for impact fee waiver, um that that that's the the first step is to make sure that it's. Needs criteria about general applicability.
Right.
So, um, having those standards that would be generally applied and looked at. Um in in other circumstances where people are requesting that type of waiver, um that that would be critical.
And I don't think we have as we sit here, right?
We 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 uh had an impact waiver proposal that came before council, I believe it was tabled.
That's right. We have a lot of questions on that.
And a lot of the, if I remember correctly, a lot of the discussion about. The waving was the economic benefit, right? That influenced what, whether the. And and we haven't revisited. That um information since we tabled it, but it it is tricky to. I don't know, I'm not even making sense, I'm trying to make sense in my own mind and it's not coming out properly.
Oh, and that's, that's a good, good point, um as well, the the public benefit component is is another requirement and. Um, the the courts in Utah have have found that economic development, job creation um is a public benefit. So really, we sort of need two of the three criteria. Um, the the first of the, of which um would need to be a standardized. Um, rule of general applicability, um you could set forth the the criteria tonight if you'd like to. Um, but it would need to be something that is generally applied, um preferably in, you know, somewhere there, someone could reference, like a code. It's so difficult, though, to come up with a one-size-fits-all because all all situations are not the same. I mean, I can think of multiple occasions where situations are are so uniquely different. Uh whether it's with this council or even with the planning commission.
Right.
It just, it just depends on the situation, so to put something in a square box.
Well, it's hard to put something in a square box when you get um a. A retail space of this size once every, what was it, thirty-five years, you said, I mean. It's not like we're gonna have this issue again next week or next year likely, this is.
I think that that this council and previous councils have made similar decisions where it's not gonna be equal to other people, and again, that's. In some ways, okay to do if they're unique, like the Lakeview Business Park, bringing them on. There was concessions, numerous concessions, probably millions of dollars worth of concessions that the city paid out for that. And so again, if they make concessions for the Lakeview Business Park, why wouldn't you make concessions now? And I mean, we recently did something unique with the the um Sean Johnson's development, so I mean. We have had a a track record throughout this whole city of unique decisions for specific occurrences, and so it's again, it's about. What's the benefit for that particular occurrence for the good of it, is it gonna bring? The best benefit for the the residents of Grantsville right now. And in the future, and that's really what we need to determine going forward. Is this gonna affect businesses going forward? Will they get as good a deal as this one? Maybe, maybe not, they're gonna be individually determined. Based on what that goes on at that particular time and what's the needs are of the city at that time. And so, making and working with businesses to get the economic development is a trend and is a standard practice throughout. The state and actually throughout the United States on doing that thing, and so. Giving our businesses that opportunity, especially our our local small businesses, that opportunity to to grow, that's literally why we're here to protect those kind of things and. And Solberg's is an epitome of our local business, like, do we want to wait until Walmart comes and brings a Walmart? Local grocery here because we don't want Solberg's here, I mean, that might not be the best comparison, but. What are we gonna wait for? Cuz you actually get an additional benefit cuz. You'll still get the same Solberg store there, now you're gonna have an additional store that you're gonna get both taxes on.
And I'm not saying we don't want. And I'm not saying we don't want Solberg. And I, you know, there was a lot of art, the newest example. There was a ton of opposition to Arby's. And now every time I drop drive by there, the cars are too deep in there. And so I'm not, I mean, we're both down the road so far that, I mean, and we both, I think. Both sides of this, if I was to sit on the other side, the fascinating articles are. How every business in Twilla has exceeded their expectations. I think the same thing happens here in Grantsville. This is a little unique situation in the fact that we have paid so much money. It was a little discouraging tonight here. I think that's for the first time that they would have just built on Durfee. I don't know that I ever heard that. I mean, I thought we we worked together to get it done. And see the vision of creating a business district, which I I'm very proud of the way Matthews Lane turned out. So we're just down there. I'm I'm just saying. It makes it brutal on a city council to go case by case. And maybe this is not brutal because it's just a re- large retail space. But I think the value is immense to both sides of this. I think it's um. Very doable. Um. I also just think that in every construction arm you take out, I think there is a reserve account. Call it a contingency account for unexpected expenses. I think this is a a little bit of an unexpected expense. Um. As Red. As Red pointed out, maybe the whole thing is not unexpected, but um.
And I think maybe the alternative.
I'm just still digging for the win-win. I'm trying.
Maybe the alternative is to maybe table this until we get a a reevaluation of our impact fees with. Uh, Robert to to kind of give us an idea of what it would look like without. Sheep's Lane in there and what that cost would actually reflect. And that might get us to that middle ground of a win-win. I don't know what their timetable is on that and if that's gonna cause issues in that.
Well, it does cause issues because they gotta close and get going.
Right.
And uh, every time you delay, it creates more costs and redoing the analysis and the. Fees increase from the bank's perspective. And so, I mean, it is a big, big decision. Um.
We're on the one lot yard line. Tableting it just calls a timeout, right? I mean, uh, is that really what we wanna do? Have a TV timeout? Can we make a decision? I mean, it sounds like to me that we can, we can maybe find some middle ground as to where this should land. I think that um, and and I'm, I don't wanna speak for them, but we had four individuals um, get up and 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 speak on. Hey, don't waive this. Um, you know, we got Lisa Lingwall, we have Kirsten, Kristen Johnson, Crystal Brown. We have future member of our council, Derek Dalton. All four of them got up and and said that. You know, essentially, it's fiscally irresponsible of us to to not. Or to waive the entire fee. So I I I I do think that um, coming to a consensus in the middle ground. And I think that those four potential. Individuals that would shop at Solberg's would probably be more apt to shop at Solberg's if they knew that. You know, they they funded a little bit of that road that um, that turns into their place. Um, because don't think for a second, those four individuals, along with other people that are listening, aren't gonna think in their mind. And I think both Dave and Carol both know that customer satisfaction is, you know, is is extremely important. But customer loyalty is priceless, right? And so I I I think if they're willing to come to some sort of, you know. And and maybe it's not ten thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars per thousand square foot. Cause that does seem like it's a little bit excessive.
It does.
It seemed like it was excessive in August.
It did.
But we went with it because that's what Robert Russell, who's our engineer, told us that we we needed to do. I mean, he he made the presentation and we made the decision.
Well, and the other component of that was. We have dirt roadways in Grantsville that need to become roadways. So the, you know, so spending dollars, the impact directly related to our roads. Uh, or gathering those funds directly related to our roads is something that.
We need to do.
Is a necessity.
It is a necessity.
Necessity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, what that, what that number is, I've got a number in my head if they, if they wanna hear it, if you guys wanna hear it.
I'd like to hear it.
Um, I think that it would be fair to say that if we went. Um, we decrease that number to two thousand dollars per one thousand square foot. That essentially takes the impact fees that they're paying currently. And that 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 they're proposing to pay currently, and it doubles it. With that one single line item. So if they're willing to invest an additional eighty-eight thousand dollars in paying an impact fee. Then I think for me, I'm not willing to go with this. Because I think going with this is actually a negative. I think it's a negative for the city. I think it's a negative for the for the citizens. But I can see their point also on the flip side of, you know, paying four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Which is, which is a pretty hefty fee. I understand. But paying something. May may lessen the ball blow and mu- mu- might not be a total win-win for both sides. Cause I don't think it is. I don't think you can get a win-win in this. So. Cause if they, if they, if they lose, then essentially we lose and the city of Grantsville loses.
Yes, I agree with that. I mean, we don't wanna get to this one yard line and.
No.
And this whole thing fall apart.
But they can score the touchdown and we'll block the extra point. That makes sense. It's just six points. Can we make up that, can we make up that one point? Or can we make up those six points with the rest of the economic development that could happen? Not only on that parcel, but also in other parcels. Well, absolutely, that's the vision behind it.
Right. And maybe when the two pads come in, we get the two-point conversion. Just go with that.
Be like the Utes and run it all the way back.
That's right.
Okay, there you go. I don't know if that's amiable, but.
Can you try again?
Siri told me that's what I should do. I used AI for all that.
So. Double eighty-eight thousand.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, that's what it is. I mean, it's. Some dollars.
What about even just, cause I I I'm, I agree entirely that let's find a negotiation. Let's find a middle ground. Um, where. You know, that that's kind of compromise that neither side gets everything that they want, right? But you find some happy middle place. Um. What about even just, cause I don't know, I feel like two thousand went a little bit lower than what I was thinking in my mind. Like, I was like, even if we. Halved that transportation because then, cause we've invested, they've invested. If we half it, then we're taking half of that, they're taking half of that. And we, we both figured it out on our, each of our sides.
Okay, Steve, what do you think?
Oh, she's gonna get mad at me. I'm not gonna turn around and look at her on there.
Just go like this and look.
So I I I was sincere when I said that uh, um. Whenever you're this close, you gotta figure out a way to make this happen because it's uh, too important for you and it's important for us. I told Carol that she was pregnant tonight. She didn't know it maybe completely. But, you know, we're, we're invested in a million dollars uh, plus in the land and and we're, you know, we're, we're, we're in it. And so um. I think you, if you can give us a number. Uh, I don't think a two hundred thousand dollar number we're gonna be able to do. I think, uh, you know, if we're talking about a seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollar number, plus a hundred, plus eighty-eight thousand on the permit fees. That you've identified in there, um, I will go back to her and uh, and we'll uh, we'll commit to. Figure out a way to to be able to make it work. Um. I wa- I was just thinking here out loud in my mind, you know, uh, uh, there is a two and a half percent contingency fee. But the bank requires us to keep that because you're always gonna have two and a half percent of your bid cost with change orders. Especially if we're building through the winter, which now we are, that we didn't think we were, but we are gonna have to build winter conditions. And and that'll eat up uh, some of that. But I, I'm committed to uh, visit with them. To uh, uh, figure out a way to pay for the eighty-eight thousand in the permit fees. And an additional uh, seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars. And uh, I I'll take the responsibility to go sit down and and talk through that issue. Um, if that could help us, uh, and I think we just need a few days to be able to figure out how we're gonna do that. But I've I've seen smart people figure out. A nineteen million dollar project, you know, how to come up with a hundred thousand dollars. Michael was easy to give up the pylon sign and to get the eighty-eight thousand. So I appreciate him bringing that up. And and we did, we went back and said, what we can do without the pylon sign on Durfee, you know, because everybody knows what's there. And and uh, and that was sixty thousand dollars of the eighty-eight for the permit fee that we talked about doing. And so um, without looking uh, back at Dave and Carol, I'll commit to you to visit with them. And figure out a way if you're saying to us, if we were able to come up with another seventy-five or a hundred thousand. Um, uh, can we move forward together? Uh, because it's a, it is a matter of you, it's a matter of us suggesting the contingency on the financing. Uh, it's literally the last issue that we have. I mean, it's, that's why we're here. That's why. She's losing sleep and and you folks have been good. And and uh, and again, so I, I could tell uh, half an hour ago that um, I didn't want it to be an all or nothing. And I don't think it's good for either party. So I'm, I'm committed to doing that if, if that's the council's recommendation back to the Solberg's. I'm prepared to to visit with them and and uh, figure out a way to make it happen.
What's the number, you guys?
I guess with that, we we would table it and then they put it on the agenda for next meeting to come back and visit this. I don't wanna table.
Hundred and seventy thousand.
Would, yeah. Are the only contingency, just gi- give me a day or two to 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 verify that I'll, I can commit to to doing that. And uh, and I'll, I I can do that in forty-eight hours to.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I I just think we should, we should make a motion, run with it, see who wants to vote yes, who wants to vote no. And I I mean, the total impact fee, um, essentially with I, with what I said, we want an exact number. So the total impact fee for um, this would be a hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and six dollars and thirty-four cents. So that's the eighty-eight thousand, six oh six, thirty-four that you were, you were willing to pay. And then adding another eighty thousand dollars onto that for the transportation impact fee. Does say that we can, we can waive it or we can reduce it. So we're reducing it. And that would be my motion that I propose that the impact fees for Solberg's um, would be a hundred and seventy-six thousand, six oh six, thirty-four. There's my motion.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay. Sorry, I was just a little too low still.
Aye.
Aye. Horizon, one day, let's have a roll call vote. Jeff?
In favor, aye.
Eddie?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Lee?
Nay.
Aye.
Yeah, I just have it.
Can I clarify one thing? Just um, for the, for the accounting purposes of it, the difference will be coming out of the transportation impact fee. All of the other impact fees, waters, everything else listed.
There's water, but yes.
The uh, well, culinary water.
Sorry, again, but.
Yeah, on the sheets, the invoice, everything that says transportation impact fee, the last three line items. Those three line items would just all combine into one and say eighty thousand dollars. That makes sense.
All right. Dave, you guys talk. On behalf of the Jeffries and Solberg's, thank you very much. And we'll, uh, we'll meet and we'll, we're gonna figure out a way to make that happen. Let us know, okay? All right, thank you. A little bit of a discussion.
Nine twenty-four?
That's easy. Okay, uh, item six, consideration of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash forty-three. An ordinance of Grantsville City approving the master development template for Grantsville City.
Hello, counsel. Jay Springer, Land Use Counsel. Um, nice to see you again. Um, so uh, really wanna say appreciate the staff report. I think it really does lay out what we're doing, what the goals are. Um. And how we, how we got here and how we anticipate this being used. Um, I do, I I was surprised, I think it was longer than July that we've been working on this and talking about it. I think it's been probably a year and a half. Um, but uh, you know, the, the whole purpose of what we're, what we brought this for and we sent it through. These, the process like it were, uh, a development agreement with a project attached to it. Even though it is, it is a template, the idea was to get feedback um, and and get the input. On the kind of core concepts that are gonna be applicable to every development. Or potentially applicable to to multiple types of development. Um, and so, so we've taken feedback from um, myself, from staff. Including Shelby, from Tyson, from opposing counsel on individual projects. As we've worked through several of these uh, on on different issues, we've taken your feedback. When we've talked about specific issues on developments over the last year and a half incorporated. Language that we've already worked on and put them all into one place. Um, and one of the key benefits in in the proposal that we've done. Is to consolidate what should change into exhibits. Um, so the court, we shouldn't be revisiting a lot of the language that is just operational. That is the, what what we refer to as the legalese, the boilerplate. A lot of those stay the same. And the main benefit to that is that every time. We start a negotiation, a discussion, if we start from the same place. Then we will only be needing to look at the things that have changed. Um, so if a developer comes in and their attorney comes and says, you know, Jay, Tyson, we have to change. We have to change this section. We know where we started and we don't have to go through and read the whole twenty-page agreement again. Because we're comparing it to what we started with, which we've already considered, we've already vetted. Um, we can always go catch where those things change. Um, but when we know the individual projects, um, and let's go to the exhibits um, pages. We know that the exhibits are going to be project specific. Only, so um, the exhibit A is your legal description. Then you're gonna have your exhibit B, the depiction, this is your site plan or your preliminary plat or your master plan. Um, there's some flexibility designed in how that goes. Exhibit C is our modifications to the development standards. Now, this is, this is where we say you have to tell us what you want that's different from what you could just come in and build. Right? That's the whole, that's the whole idea. They have to tell us what they they're changing and what it would be if they didn't change it. So we have them fill that out. Um, same with the zoning modifications. That's, the the difference is the development standards, those things like setbacks, building heights. Wits, a lot widths, things like that. Zoning modifications would be uh, like uses. If we're saying you're gonna have mixed use instead of commercial separate from from residential. Um, and then if there are any other completion assurances or bonding requirements, upsizing requirements, we call those out. And then kind of a catch-all at the very end um, with the additional project-specific requirements. Uh, and taking feedback from the planning commission, we also kind of propose some concepts. The idea is the, the way that exhibit G is referred to in the, in the contract um, is a little broad. And so we wanted to provide some examples and context so that the applicant and staff. Um, you know, as anticipating that there's. Oh, at some point going to be turnover and and new people are gonna be looking at this. Um, identify the types of things that we would see here. This is not exhaustive. It's just supposed to provide some examples and context to kind of say, oh, that's where this goes. Um, the front page of it is also a cheat sheet or a a uh. What I call the informational cover sheet so that you, that's your project-specific information. So that. So that says, this is who, this is who the developer is, these are their contacts. This is what the project's called, where it is, what zone it is, how big it is, all of that. So that you have one thing, when you pull it up and and you're just looking at that first page. You know exactly which project you're talking about, rather than having to bury in to the recitals. And you know, if you're going in there and trying to figure out which property was this, which which one it is. But if you go to one page prior to that. This is where we, we say, this is the underlying zone, easier to identify. And then that also provides, provides a little bit of a context. Again, the the process that we followed is, was ten day notice, public hearing, receive feedback. We, as, as we talked about before, an applicant can always propose changes. This is the starting point, we wanna, we wanna streamline this process. I like the comment in the staff report that Grantsville is at the point where we are going to continue seeing applications. We're going to see this, this is why we rewrote the P U D code, is because we're going to keep seeing it. The other thing to keep in mind is there's different types of developments. Some sections, we tried to draft this as as well as possible so that if something doesn't apply to a specific development, it just doesn't matter. It's okay to leave it in in there. Like if there's not phasing, then the way that we've tried to phrase those kinds of things is just to provide for it if there is. If there is an H O A, then we have these other tools. That's one of the the examples that came out of, out of a meeting with you about how to deal with, with that and provide some additional resources for you if if an H O A goes belly up and we need to step in and and take some action. So that is, that is where we are. We are looking for feedback, there are a couple of, you know, this would be a document that would be the starting point. There's a, always a few little things to be subject to. Non substantive changes, cleanup, putting it into formats that might be distributed. So we might wanna put a, a version that is a PDF only, that doesn't have, that has different formats for what the applicant is intended to fill in or identify those to cross tags or something in any other parts of your system that they're gonna see. We might have some things like that, but in terms of the the core language, we wanna get your feedback. And kinda get, get the blessing of, you know, this is, this is the direction that we, we want to see things come to you again in this format and with this core language. So that when we're, we're talking about the next development project that that comes up using this. We're starting from this and then we're talking about the changes to it and those project specific exhibits and and those individual things. So with that. If you have any questions or comments or typos that you spotted that I didn't, happy to to go through that.
I do.
I do as well, so you go first, Heidi.
So on section four point three. You know, it's gonna be me bringing this up, but in the parks, open space, four point three point three. I'm not sure I love. This says, the city may grant in its sole discretion to meet the proportional required open space requirement for a phase by including open space in the next future phase, provided that the developer shows good cause for the delay, addresses the shortfall and provides sufficient detail of the proposed future open space. I don't wanna give them any leeway if they.
You don't have to.
Okay, i- it is the sole discretion, yes, but.
So, yeah.
I don't want any discretion, I guess.
So, so one thing, and and this is a little bit related, and then I'll come, I'll circle right back. But a development agreement under state law is the only way that we can consider other applications and hold this application to it. State law under the vesting code has has made it so that we cannot. It would be illegal to look at other property that the applicant owns that's right next door if it's not part of the application. Unless it's in a development agreement as subject to phasing. So that is, that is something that I I think was important for us to to cover. Because it's come up recently with kinda some of the questions of why we have phasing covered in these. Because that's, that is one of the things that only development agreements give us that ability. But to go back to this question, if they ask for it, they can always ask for it and we could always reject it. This is kind of just saying, this is actually saying, giving them an expectation that they don't have any right to it. And that we have, that that the city council has the sole discretion on that. Because that would be, that would be legislative at this stage, when it's a development agreement, it's already legislative. And setting it out with that very strong language of in its sole discretion sends that message. That they've gotta have a compelling case if they're gonna ask for something that's in our discretion. That's my, my take on it.
Okay.
But that does, I don't know if that addresses your concern that there, you, we could remove it and just say that, you know, it is, it is the policy or, or the city may not waive open space requirements at all. But the the reasoning being, there may be situations where they say, we know we have to build this park. And we, we haven't siphoned it off to a third party that's not gonna end up building it. When we've addressed the other concerns that we've heard that in in this chamber before about how those things can, you know, not meet the expectations of the city. And under those circumstances, if they wait one phase out of ten, say they, they mathematically should have built it in phase three. They're proposing to build it in phase four out of ten, is that gonna substantially cause any issues for the city? Probably not, because they still have six phases to go. That, that's a way to think about it.
I guess my concern is if it's at phase nine and they say they're gonna complete it by phase ten and then they start completing phase ten and phase, and then things fall apart and then it, the completion never happens. That's my concern.
So that's the second part of that same four point three point three. So notwithstanding the foregoing, in no event, this is not even discretionary.
Okay.
The total open space on completion of a phase can't be less than seventy five percent of the proportional for the project to be completed at that phase. So it is putting a cap on what that discretionary allowance is, even, even on on top of the discretion.
Okay.
So it's, there's, there's no, there's no circumstance where they get to fifty percent of what they're supposed to have built by the completion of that phase. They have to be at least seventy five.
To even come in and suggest that they could ask for a discretion to move to the next phase, is that right?
If it, if it would put them below seventy five percent of the total for, for everything from phase one, say, from phase one to six. There's supposed to be, you know, a hundred acres of open space. They wanna say, well, we only wanna do fifty, we say, no, the lowest we could go is seventy five. And that would still be provided that you're proving to us that you have the other twenty five that would bring you up to where you need to be accounted for in the next phase.
Okay, thank you.
So just along those same lines, cuz I had a question about four point three point four. And I was trying to wrap my mind around why that was, but I think I understand it a little bit better. It says, parks and trails to be dedicated for public use may not make up more than fifty percent of any phase. So in those regards, let's say you had a large park and you had a contingency of a few houses around that park. And those houses equaled twenty percent of the total build of that particular phase, they can't do that, that's what that's saying.
Right, right, and and that's.
You can't make that be base ten.
Well, and and part of it is.
We could, there, there's other protections in there, but I think I understand that a little bit better. I was curious as to why to have that in there and now I can see.
It's exactly to prevent the ten acre park being siphoned off as its own separate parcel and then saying, well, we're gonna get to that. That, that's why, and it's, there's other protections in there as well, but that was something to call out. Because they want to, we want them to be integrated for the most part. And so, you know, the ten acre park, well, then build it with another eleven acres of whatever else you're building. Any other questions?
I have a really quick one, it could just be a quick fix. So four point one point five on page six. There you go. So this whole, I, I, I like this, I'm, I'm obviously warranty is a big thing. But it talks about this durability testing period. And first of all, I just question like the, the grammar at the end of the sentence. You know, where it says the acceptance of the, of the improvements by the city council or its designee. And then it goes in parentheses durability testing period and then period. I don't think that that, I don't think the intention is to have that before the period. I think the period needs to go after the designee. Is that, is that safe to say? Everyone see that? I mean, what, what is the parentheses defining, is it defining the designee?
It's defining the period of one year following the acceptance of the improvements.
So you're saying that the warranty period, one year for that entire phrase is what you would refer to as the durability.
Right, cuz the, the trigger is the acceptance by city councilor designated.
You're making a definition.
Yes.
I just wanna make sure that, yeah, I wasn't assuming something, makes sense now.
Correct.
Okay. All right. That works.
Okay.
Anything else?
Some things I do like is in section one, one point two. Where it talks about, and I actually think we're gonna run into this in not too long, albeit they're probably not in the M D As of some other projects. But just that the project's abandoned or if there's discontinued for a period of more than two years. But the developer defaults on any provisions in this agreement. And then there's also some, you know.
Yeah, there, there's a cure period. I will say, there's likely going to be legislation that changes how cities can deal with this period of, of, the vesting statute is being overhauled. That is, that is in the works, so we'll see legislation on that next year. And it's specifically accounting for cities that have periods of, hey, you have to keep things moving. We're defining what reasonable diligence is for pursuing your project. So there's some clarification, it should not, we'll have to reconsider whether that affects things like. I mean, it wouldn't affect anything that happens before then, but we will want to look at the, more for the code than development agreements because we have that, but that is something to also keep in mind. But it's, it's an issue that's drawn attention of the legislators. So, but, but it is, it is because it's working.
I like it cuz there's some teeth there, I guess if they knock our proverbial teeth out, then, you know, we'll just deal with that when it comes. But I, I like what we have in there. The density as well, just three point four, just defining the maximum number of, of units to build up to, I think that's great. I will point out the three point seven in fees, seems how that's a hot button issue today. Just that, you know, the obligations to pay the application fees, the impact fees, the connection fees and the other city fees as charges and charges at the time of permit application.
So, yeah, and part, part of that is too, is at the time of the permit application ties it to if they have a, a phased development and we update our fees between application one and application two. They're subject to the fees at the time of the application.
Yeah, and I saw that in there as well, I, I marked it somewhere. Oh, yes, eight point one point five does say that at the time of application, it goes to the cost of the fees that are currently in place. So if.
So it's initiated.
When it's, when it's initiated, the phase is initiated. Yeah, not the entire project, so if a project lasts for fifty five years, I mean, you guys see what I'm saying. Thirty years, then, you know, there's gonna be increases on those fees over the course of time. And that helps protect the city from some sort of grandfather clause, right?
Yeah, another, sorry, Red, are you finished?
No, I'm pretty much done.
Do you wanna keep going?
No.
Okay. On four point three point five, it's talking about if open space and amenities are not completed within three months of completion of the non open space development for the applicable phase. The developer may incur fees or other penalties for failure to complete. Do we need a definition of what?
There, there would be things that were in place under ordinance, so it's, it's leaving the door open, but it's not imposing requirements.
Okay, so. So should it impose requirements?
It could, we'd have to work that out and that may be something that would go into exhibit G. If there's something, that, that may be. I don't think that we tried to come up with a solution for that in this, in this draft. But we want, we flagged the issue, basically, that's what this is doing.
Do you guys feel like there should be a definition of what those fees and penalties would be for non completion?
And the time.
I think you could drop those into G. And, yeah, as a project specific requirement, uninitiated.
Okay.
It's kinda tough to, really don't have a penalty, do we?
The famous last words is in the next phase.
Yeah.
We, we've drafted a lot around phase protection.
Yeah.
Okay. So maybe, does that need to be in this or that's just?
That's already, that's already.
Is, okay.
Well, so, so there's the default bonding requirements that are gonna be imposed. Those are not, those are not changing. But there's also a provision to, to make changes and and I specifically identify those that are identifiable at the time of the M D A.
I have a question for Shelby, just, I mean, maybe I'm not remembering. I remember having the discussion, planning and zoning about this template. But did planning and zoning approve it for recommendation to the city council? That's what I thought, but I just wanted to double check and make sure. And we've implemented those provisions in here, could you show us where those are?
I know exhibit G, we added that list.
Okay.
And then the section.
Seven point, some, it was, it was the one on.
Okay. Yeah, so the bullet point in exhibit G, the first bullet.
Oh, it's seven point seven on the limitation of, on recovery for damages, we, we tweaked that a little bit. And then we fixed a couple of little typos that we've spot, every, every time we go through, that's just the way it is.
Oh, it was reporting in compliance timelines and events, I think that was.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. That's right.
So that, that was one, and the, the crux of that discussion, just so you know, is how staff monitors these requirements that we impose is as important as having them. I mean, we, I, with the other clients, I've seen, you know, five year delay agreements of, well, we, you're, if we come and do this project, then you're gonna have to do pay your part. But then they just kinda don't know who has those and when they expire. And then by the time they do the project, they don't have a good, you know, so, so that was one of the things that we kinda just drew to the attention of how, how would staff monitor these? A big part of it is just having them identified out like this in formats where they're easier to find is a big first step. And then there's others, there's software solutions, there's other things, and I'm not familiar enough with your inner workings to, to make any. To make any recommendations along those lines, but it is, it is an issue um, that, that we've considered and. And Shelby's been, been thinking about at least a little bit.
Well, at least that's more of a proactive approach, by having that in there and being able to implement it into that exhibit, so. That's good. Better than we have right now.
Yeah, I, I think there's a lot of really good things in here.
And I do, I appreciate like with the exhibits that it. Me, because we've had in the past where, you know, developers said, well, we didn't know you wanted that included or like. Or it just got left out or whatever and.
Well, can you go up to the, the park section again, four point three? So I mean, if, if we only had the requirements for what needed to be in the park buried into this. Text of the paragraph that people, I'm going to, I'm going to skim over it because I'm going to think it's what I wrote.
Yeah.
And, and unless you flag it, but by putting it in an exhibit, you know, I. An attorney sends me a contract without the exhibits. I'm like, this is useless to me. I, I don't know what you want me to do with it. I don't know what the project is. I don't know how much money is involved. I don't know. Anything about what my client cares about, which is, which is all, all of that. And so that's the kind of thing where. We, we tried to remove those variables out of it. And then when we're negotiating, Tyson, me, whoever, we, we look at that um, and. We can very easily.
Yeah.
One, there's, there's the software that we would use. You always run those compares. Um, they, they have to tell us if they're changing anything in the form. We, we start from a format that's controlled. Um, and then we, we go from there. So we know they made changes on these pages. And these are the ones that we need to talk about, and these are the ones we need to, to educate and, and get the council's opinion on.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. And I do appreciate the cover sheet and also to you guys. Just looking at how our cover sheets have evolved. Like just introducing the project, like these were the key things that planning and zoning mentioned. This is what we recommend it with, with these stipulations. Like even this is where it's located. This is the zoning. Thank you guys for that. Thank you, Jerry, for. That, just that quick, you know, synopsis that helps so much too, because sometimes. You might have, like the city council might have two or three different developments in front of them. And you're like, oh, which one was that? You know, and it's easy to have that, that basic information. So thank you.
Good.
Any other comments?
My only other comments, just Tyson, Michael, is it good?
This is an improved document for sure. It's, there's, there's been a lot of effort that went into this and uh. Um, it, it, it's, it's a strong starting position for any development agreement. There's, these are all going to be subject to some. Some trading of paper back and forth um, and, and some red lines as, as we go through all of these, as you're all well aware, but. This is a, this is a strong position for the city to begin these negotiations.
I agree with that. I think that the best provision is the specific performance in there, that there's no damages that would come. So we won't repeat. Twilla's windfall of a case. And I think if we can start from this and work towards that going forward, this will put us. With the developments that are coming our way, way ahead of the game.
Yeah, that aspect should be non-negotiable.
Period.
Period.
Okay.
I make a motion to be approved ordinance twenty twenty-five dash forty-three. An ordinance of Grantsville City approving the master development template, Grantsville City.
The motion is your second.
Second.
Motion is second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven.
Mayor, could I, could I make just a, an order of operations change? We address item number nine, um, agenda item number nine next. I'm sorry, Ben.
Make a motion.
A motion that we uh, move up item number nine, um, and address that um, next, so.
Second.
Yes.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Yeah.
All right. Is he looking tired back there?
Yeah, he's old.
Okay, here we go. Consideration of approving ordinance twenty twenty-five dash forty-five. An ordinance of Grantsville City approving the rezone for six fifty-five South Willow Street, three eighty-seven East Nygreen Street. Four hundred East Heritage Lane, four twenty East Heritage Lane. And parcel number eighteen dash zero four nine dash zero dash zero 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 R. From R one rural residential zoning designation to, to the R one. Twenty-one single-family residential zoning designations. How's that?
That was a mouthful. I'm saying, I, this is what I'm talking about. I love this, like.
Thank you.
Sweet to Jay. Say, Jerry, thanks. Like, I love this staff report, so good job, you guys.
Thank you. Um, so a little background on this. The applicant's requesting a rezone on six properties along Willow Street and Nygreen to go from RR one to RR. R one twenty-one. Um, in the future land use map, it is designated as low-density residential. Um, it matches and aligns with our goals in our general plan. And just to kind of give you an idea, so you have A ten, half acre lots, two and a half. One acre lots that it's currently designated, two and a half, half acre. Um, so it just kind of. Matches um, the area. And then here is our future land use map as well. Um, which is the low density residential, allowing a maximum of two dwelling units per acre. And then again, just the GIS. Um, this did come with a positive recommendation from planning commission.
Shelby, the only thing I can't see on there, and I apologize, I'm sure this come up in planning and zoning. I'm assuming they're building houses in the back. Where's the access?
Oh, it, there's a road.
We're putting a road from.
So initially, there's a road right here.
That's not right.
It's not a road.
If, if you can look on the screen. So initially, there, this was an approved development with a road.
With one acre lots.
Yes, with one acre lots. And then they are proposing. Um, they are just proposing this um, as a potential concept. If a rezone is approved. And so then you have your road here and then those lots in the back would access right here.
The homes that are facing Nygreen Street, they're essentially their lots would be divided up. Into half acre lots. Some of those lots are well over one acre, right?
Right, but the access is not from Nygreen at all.
No, it'll be from the new proposed road.
Yes.
The issue, and we probably, I, I'll just preface this because it was an extensive discussion about the neighboring prod, uh, property to. The, the, the south that is owned by Catherine Christiansen. So, I mean, there are some issues with that. Um, I think that, I mean, a, as a council. We're here just to decide whether or not the rezone is approved and it goes from one acre lots to half acres. How that's resolved, really that is probably between staff, city engineer, the developer. And potentially the property owner, um, regardless of what we say and think right now. Of the road that's accessing Willow Street and how little property um, that is. Hers in, in case of an easement. She has lived there for, you know, well over seven years. So she has right to her property, right? And, and the access easement, so. But how they work all that out, I mean, really it's not for us to decide right tonight.
Correct.
Because we could talk about that for another two hours and thirty minutes.
Thank you, Red.
Thanks for shutting me down.
I agree. You were going to say something about it.
I was.
Okay, so my, my minute thirty-five second ran.
You did a really good job. Okay, so. And a motion, you guys.
I think this makes sense, right? I mean, R one twenty-one, one acres.
No more than two, two units per acre.
Yep. Diving another road.
Yep.
Dedicated it to the city. It's on a private lane. Which I think that other one, the previous, I mean, that just, that, that was no good.
No, it was not a good design.
It was a good design. It was a more of a private lane. There's not really good access for our fire trucks to go down there. This, this new concept, if they run with it, you know, really does essentially hit the mark. On, on what we, what we'd like to see as a city, as far as I'm concerned.
There's also potential to extend this road um, to the east with some design adjustments. And, and allow future connectivity. Instead of just Nygreen and South Street, we can split that, those properties even further.
Just be sure the uh, turnaround there is the right.
Right, yes. That's up to the city engineer, right?
It is.
Okay.
I, I agree though Shelby, that the connectivity is.
Yep.
Okay.
Important.
And a motion.
Do it, okay. Oh, wait.
Do you need magnifying?
We have proved.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash forty-five as stated, as stated on the agenda.
Good enough. I'll second it.
Perfect.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Are you not all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. There you go, Grant.
Thank you. Thanks, Grant.
Have a good evening.
Okay, see, consideration of proposed amendment for Grantsville City Land Use Management Code, specifically chapters. One through twenty-five minus twenty, which is on the next agenda item.
Okay. Hello, everybody. First, I wanted to say thank you. This has been kind of a marathon. And no one likes to see how sausage gets made, but you guys are making the sausage tonight and staying late and doing it. So I appreciate the. The hard work and getting it done. Um, these uh, next couple of items are, are pretty straightforward, I think. Um, the, there is one uh, thing in chapter nine point five. Uh, uh, with regard to Parkway landscaping, um, this is a cleanup kind of thing where it's uh, tightens up our definition of what a Parkway. Landscaping is and where it's required and what it needs to look like. So you have that and that's in front of you. Um, then the rest of it is all really just, I did a, a control F and everywhere it said zoning administrator, I plugged in. Community Development Director or designee. So that's how that came about. Um, I think it's pretty straightforward, but if you have any questions, let me know.
And, or their designee is who?
It's if we were to die, both Shelby and I were to die tomorrow, then Nicole would have to. Be the designee.
Or whoever the city manager does.
Or whoever the city manager.
Because he does have that.
That's right. Yep.
I just want to make sure that we understood what that meant.
For sure.
This was discussed extensively as well in planning and zoning. Um, they gave a favorable recommendation for what we have here. I would like to go back to the, the Parkway. Um, and just make sure that, you know, we, we read that and understand it and, because there was a lot there.
There is, yeah.
And, albeit, there's a lot of changes, but there's really all just, like you said. Just putting him in that, in that space rather than the zoning industry.
It, it really tightens up whose responsibility it is. If you've got a park strip next to your property. Whose responsibility is it? Is it the HOA? Is it the um, is it the adjacent property owner? And if you don't have curb and gutter, where does that responsibility begin and end? And so again, this, this clarifies that.
Have a lot of that.
Well, we do, and um, it, it's, I think that the assumption always was that it was the adjacent property owner. But in the case of code enforcement or anything like that, this really clarifies who's responsible for what.
Yeah, defines it.
Okay.
Accepting?
I don't have anything.
Let's make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve. Um, item seven, consideration of the proposed amendment to the Grantsville City Land Use and Management Code. Specifically chapters one through twenty-five excluding chapter twenty.
Motion is a second.
A second.
Motion and a second. More discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I'd make consideration of proposed amendment to Grantsville City Land, to Grantsville City Land Use and Management Code, chapter twenty. Sign regulations.
All right, um, I, I want to express my gratitude as well for the representatives from the sign industry who. I didn't know this, but they actually have like a web crawler, uh, AI kind of thing that's, that's set up and, and pulls. And, and triggers when cities are, are looking at um, amending their sign ordinances. So. They get an alert that says, hey, Grantsville, I was like, we end up on your radar. So uh, that's why they're here tonight and I'm grateful. Uh, they were super helpful and um, the only minor kind of little disagreement that we had on. Um, this was with regard to the height of the monument signs. And uh, you see the planning commission's recommendation in front of you. Um, the. We, we could argue back and forth all night long about how high an appropriate sign is, but the, the, long and short of it is. Uh, and, and this is just anecdotal, but I want to ask you if, uh, if you know where O'Reilly's is in town. Do you know where American Burger is in town? You know where those businesses are. They only have six foot high signs. They're fine. They've got, uh, American Burger even has a little bit of a. Uh, marquee on the bottom with a movable uh. Um, letters that they can change in and out. Uh, you, you're going to find them. They, you know where they are. Uh, if you don't know where they are, you're probably going to Google it. And then when you get close, you're going to look for the sign. You're going to be okay. Um. That's uh, really the only real discrepancy that we had between what's staff and the planning commission recommended and. What the sign companies uh, would have preferred to see. These, these kinds of decisions. We run into first amendment kinds of decisions or, or concerns when we're, we're. Looking at regulating things like what does the sign say? What are the colors of the sign? Those kinds of thing. Um, we, we can regulate things like placement for safety. We can regulate for aesthetics and how they look. Um, we can do those kinds of things. What we're limited in is what, what the sign actually says. And they were super helpful with that. So we tightened up the language with that regard. Um, so these kinds of things with regard to height. Um, amount of illumination that comes out, those kinds of things we can and should. Uh, have a standard for. And so that's where we're at with that. Um, the other thing that I think might be of interest to you and, and our attorney brought this up and, and as a, as a potential concern. This with regard to the provisions uh, on enforcement. Um, the, the code as, as proposed would allow any employee to see a sign on the side of the road that's in violation of our ordinance. And pick up the sign and bring it to uh, like the, the shop. And hold on to that for a couple of weeks and then someone could go and pick it up and, and move it off to Twilla or the county or whatever, not in our city limits. Um, specifically, these would be uh, those snipe signs that you see everywhere. Uh, the real estate investor wanted, the, we'll, we'll groom your pet or, you know, those kinds of things. Um, those are the signs that we want to really kind of regulate. And. The reason why it's a good idea, I feel like, and planning commission agreed that it's a good idea to have any employee. Have that kind of authority to pick those signs up. Is that we have a, a, a part-time code enforcement officer, but we have several full-time employees that are out and about all day long. And they can pick up those signs, throw them in the back of the truck. At the end of the shift, they drop them off at the shop. We hold on to them for a couple of weeks. If they don't get picked up, we'll just toss them. Which is the most likely scenario. It was also brought up, what about yard sales and that kind of thing? And where I was at in Texas, um, that question was brought up as well. And the way we, we did it was we kind of winked and nodded at it a little bit. Um, technically they're illegal, but. If there's no one around to enforce it between the hours of Friday at three thirty and Monday morning at seven thirty. You know.
Yards.
It's right. And, and so as long as they take them up, they're out after that time and. It's right, and and so as long as they take them up, they're out after that time and picked up before that time. We should be in, we should be okay. Um and obviously, we're not gonna be super strict about uh kids doing lemonade signs and that kind of thing. We're um. We're gonna I'll have reasonable allowances for that too, but. Um this is obviously for businesses and for those snipe signs that are just, they're they're cluttery and and uh disorderly, so.
Can we like going on that, cuz I kinda wanted to see a little more strict on the snipe signs, not what you were just saying, but. The ones that we see every weekend that line Main Street. Um cuz that that's been kind of a. Thorn in my side for a while, as many of you guys know, because I complain about it so much. Um. I, because like, can we go back up to the snipe sign, Alicia? Um. Cuz I think we were just there and.
What's that? It's it's intended to. It's actually a a a um industry term of of art, I guess. Um it's something that uh. It it's those signs, it's the ones with the wire frame. Pushing the ground and have the.
Cuz we, is there any way to go stricter on that one? Cuz like.
They're prohibited, so I don't know how you get more restricted than.
Prohibited?
Absolutely prohibited.
With the exception of political.
Political signs are allowed, but.
Maybe I didn't read it correctly then. Let me read it again.
It's, this is just the definition.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Prohibition is later in the.
Yeah, go to the prohibition, cuz I must have misread it, because I was like, seriously? Maybe I missed the prohibited word. Good. Then I will not complain anymore for a moment.
It's thirty-two, isn't that what we're looking for? Is that the definition?
And so that's why you were saying, like, the wink wink with.
The yard sale.
Number six, I believe, right?
And so that will apply to, you know, like there at the end of Durfee, like all of those signs will have to get cleaned up.
And the and the beauty is that if they go up, like and they they pop up like dandelions. Um when, as soon as they're up and anyone driving around sees them, they just take them up, put them in the back of the truck.
Provisions in there for banner signs, like you see often on that corner.
Yes.
Um in regards.
But they need a permit for those.
Need a permit for those, that's right. And they can only be up for a certain period of time. I think it was like sixty days.
Sixty days.
And so that's gonna cover, cuz I remember Mary, you bringing that up, you know, like. Even there by Maverick or whatever, when we have like the banners like saying, there's gonna be the Messiah concert, or there's gonna be. The Honey Harvest Festival or whatever, that kind of thing.
Totally allowed.
Those are allowed.
This is as long as it doesn't impede the uh the the line of sight.
And that's that's clarified in this chapter as well with the clear view triangle.
Okay, I'm I'm happy now.
Something completely off the subject, but more in regards to the representative Miesco. Um I I have a question about our sign out front. Our sign out front is considered a monument sign, correct? So, and how tall is it? Ten feet?
Probably ten feet.
Or is it grandpa's or dance?
Yeah.
Well, that's the.
Or do we wanna set that precedent? So I mean, do we, I mean, anything about that?
See, six feet is not tall enough for me, for a business. I think that what we have out here. What we did, what did we tell Arby's? I don't have a problem with those.
But but that's different, that's not a monument. That's that's different.
Right, but we have one, the school has one, all the schools have one.
Yeah, but it's ours. I would think ours is a reader board.
Do you have like a picture of what a monument sign?
They're usually somewhere between four and eight feet tall. Usually, they're. Masonry or.
So these would be limited to twenty feet in height? These are multi-tenant kind of signs? So if you scroll down just a little more, that's a monument sign. I really like this example. I I like how the the materials that they use in the sign are actually mirrored in the building behind that, if you if you'll notice that. Um this is the kind of thing I think we wanna see more of. So if you scroll down just a little more.
But is it six feet? Is it six feet from the low point?
No.
Or is it six feet from the high point? I mean, so you could say that's probably more than six feet.
Well, we.
We like it, but it's not a squat slope.
Well, does there need to be a differentiation? Sorry, Mayor. Is there need to be a differentiation between? Like, because, you know, they, she brought up SR one thirty-eight, like if it's on a highway versus. You know, if you're going sixty versus thirty.
That's has more to do with the size of the copy on the sign than it does with the sign itself. Obviously, you're gonna, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, I also think location and aesthetics too. I mean, you're driving down I eighty and you wanna know where the McDonald's is. They have a thirty-foot sign with the big M on the top, right? And we don't want that going down Main Street, so obviously. This isn't a monument sign, right? That's a.
And it's an aesthetic that we're trying to develop on our main street, and if we want our main street to look like Orem. We can have our main street look like Orem. If we want our main street to look. More classy than Orem, then we can. And I'm from Orem. I grew up in Orem and I love it, but uh I don't love State Street in Orem.
I I would just like to, I mean visually picture an example of a monument sign along Main Street. That doesn't fit this nail right here.
So verges would be one that is a is one on Main Street. Their their sign is a good example of one that doesn't comply. Now, a a legal non-conforming sign can stay in use. Until it's either replaced or damaged to the point where fifty percent of the value is damaged. So if you're replacing it, you gotta meet the code, and that's si- similar to most other things. If there's a use that's anywhere in town. If you're changing the use, you gotta come into compliance. Otherwise, you're a legal non-conforming. Your grandfather did. Yeah, it's a pole sign.
That's a bad example. Um I'll just looking for another example.
Uh Dr. Worgel's office, what does that look like?
Well, I think that's small.
The one that's on um. That is monument sign.
That is a monument.
Yeah. And it needs those requirements. It's not tall.
I mean, yeah, it is, and it's on that road, so. Specifically monument signs, I'm just curious as to where we would see that anywhere else.
So this would be a multi-tenant sign here.
This is a church, the church has a monument sign, the one that's on.
This is, Michael and I both really like that one.
Yeah, it's short too.
Yeah, Myers and Marsh.
Yeah.
I think that's pretty short too.
It's like you're hanging somebody just.
That's good.
Yeah, see, that's a good one.
How tall is it?
I would guess six foot, just out of guess. You probably got two, two and two and those three different little segments going up.
What is our definition for max, what was the max height?
Six foot.
Six feet for one of those, but that's not.
If it's just a single tenant, right?
But a free, a freestanding sign needs to have two poles, right?
Yeah, and and have materials that are similar to the main building.
So there are multiple different types of signs that could be taller than six feet on Main Street.
As the zoning would allow, yep.
This is specifically talking about monument signs.
Yep.
I think we're okay with that. I think there's other ways around to to get a taller sign if the individual wants to pay for it. And they can go a different route with a taller sign.
Yeah, so your pot's about three feet tall there.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's on the slope.
Where are you gonna measure from?
You you would measure from the the concrete base. Not not ground level, the concrete base.
After the concrete base.
Yeah.
Is anywhere in here addressing, and I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I saw it, but like the feather flags, I think they're called. Uh. It's like it.
Could you go back to that?
What's that?
The hydraulic place, the the hose place.
Yes, also the bakery on across from Maverick.
I think it's under the definition here of uh banner.
No, that's two more points.
Yeah, it just has one.
Maybe it's under flag then.
But it is two points. It's whether you'll put on the bottom, just put on the top.
You know, we had to take out flags because that was one of those that they were like, you just don't wanna touch flags.
Yeah. You had it in there, didn't you?
We did, and then.
Took it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz it could be a free speech.
Yeah.
Thing crosses pretty fast into the.
Yeah, it's a wind sign there. See where it says it's designed to flutter, rotate, or display other movement under the influence of wind.
Is that one of those like crazy guys?
Do you wanna do that one more time, Julie?
That's how they go, huh? That's exactly it.
I was it for Halloween. No, I think it looks good.
So are we saying that our sign out here is not a monument sign?
Uh I think it is a monument sign according to the definition, but it would be a legal non-conforming sign. Per uh if if we adopted this.
If we have a reader board underneath it or on top of it, for that matter.
It's it's all together at the 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 message center plus the actual copies part portion of the sign. That consists of a sign. That's the whole thing is a sign.
What I don't wanna do is approve this and turn around and have to replace it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, only if it's damaged beyond fifty percent of its value.
If someone run, if someone runs into it and we need to replace it.
Lost control of my car. I don't know what happened.
Okay, so I I still think six feet is too short. We gotta do at least eight.
I don't think we wanna give you five minutes.
Monuments, we usually do somewhere between. They go up to eight, like we just did one for Hilton or Marriott. It was eight feet tall, it was big radius, but it was a monument sign. It all stucco face and then exposed letter and lights that shine on it. So I do, I do agree with the sentiment of having everything lower, and when you're driving a vehicle, you're already three feet up. So.
Line of sight.
Line of sight becomes.
Well, we could, we could adjust it two feet.
We could adjust it, and it's not like everybody's going to go to the eight feet, because obviously that's going to incur more cost. So.
Is is candle still?
Yeah, I'm, you started with your comment. Could we? Do you wanna finish what you were gonna say in public comment? Yeah, I I wouldn't mind hearing the reasoning behind the increase, what you're seeing across in other in other cities or. Specifically, so.
Um I honestly can't remember exactly where I finished, but I just wanted to point out to hit to your point on the city. I was just up in Idaho and somebody, same situation happened, drunk driver hit a sign. That they had just put in, and they could no longer put it in because of the code that they had just inserted. So it it does happen. Hopefully, it never happens out there, but um. My point really was just businesses coming in. They wanna have the same opportunities as other businesses. So I I personally, that Arby's sign that's right there, I was classifying that as a monument sign. If that's not a monument sign, then. Cuz I understood that the we're we're trying to go away from the freestanding signs from the conversation that we had on this road. So monument sign would be the main signage. So if if you're saying that freestanding signs are going to be considered. Um it kind of changes it a little bit, but I still think for safety, the line of sight, six feet is not, it's not tall enough. And I and like I said, I can send you the safety um documents that I have. But it's just, it's not, cars are driving by, and if you're, I mean, you take that out there and you put it at six feet, your message center is gonna be right here. And a car is gonna be blocking it. That's a safety issue. And that comes directly from ISA. So that that's our big thing is safety, and then having letting businesses have the same opportunities as others that are here. So, any other questions?
No, perfect, thank you.
Yep.
You guys say, I I'm just gonna bring up, I knew you were gonna be mad. I just have one other quick thing to say about the snipe signs. I agree that we don't like them everywhere. But in reference to all the additional comment or the additional discussion tonight as far as small businesses. Are we taking away the opportunity for a small business? I mean, because if if it's like a. Home-based business or like they have a mechanic shop in their. Backyard or things like that that we've approved in the past, or the planning and zoning is approved. What means do they have to advertise for their business to make it successful that to the point that maybe then they can. Move into um more of a commercial location that would have a monument sign and things like that.
Social media. Like, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be driving and see a little. Like, kind of little dinky sign in a. I'll take my car here.
Right.
You know, I'm gonna go for, or I'm gonna look on social media, or I'm gonna look on Google and be like, local places. That do infill repair. Like, I'm not gonna look for a little sign.
I I agree with you, but like, let's say the local clothing store in town often has. Little signs up with balloons trying to get people into their small business.
They can put A-frame signs up, but they have to be ta- taken down every day.
Every day.
Which is what they already do anyway.
They're supposed to.
I mean, I think it's more the nature of what that sign is. It's a temporary, it's meant to be a temporary, I mean, I. I dislike them so much that my political signs, I pulled down the night of. The election, because I I don't like them.
I know, I hated putting mine up because.
I do understand why they're there, and I and and I I s- I understand the concern, I think for, I mean. Was writing down, and we're talking small businesses, they're the backbone of our community, I and. I I wanna make sure that we wouldn't wanna, but at the same time, there are other avenues, I think that. That we could have that. I don't know that we want every corner and every intersection.
I don't either. I I completely agree with that. I just am saying.
Does that take away from them?
Yes.
Yes, however, they could still go the banner route. They could strategically put up banners and pay the permit for that and keep it up for sixty days. And then take it down, and then they could reapply and and go that way.
Okay.
The corner of Willow and Durfee, there's been a uh power rake and eration sign there for six years. The corner of Willow and Durfee, there's been a uh, power rake and eration sign there for six years. And it needs to go.
Yeah, I agree, I'm not.
It faded, I can't even read the number, I tried to call it, they don't wanna come out here to do it. I mean, just don't clutter our yard, now I can just pull it, so.
Yeah.
What about our cemetery signs we just approved?
Well.
That's not.
That's different.
Under this.
Nice try.
Good point though.
Try to bring up the cemetery at ten thirty and forty-two seconds.
That's a temporary sign.
Yeah.
Ninety days.
I think this is fantastic that we're doing this, thank you for time and effort on this.
Yes.
Okay, what do you guys wanna do? Approve, deny?
I move that we approve. Um, let's see, we're on number eight, right?
Yep.
I move that we approve the proposed amendment to the Grantsville City Land Use and Management Code, Chapter Twenty, Sign Regulations.
I second.
Motion in a second, any more discussion?
With no additional um adder for the monument sign.
Do you guys want it up to eight?
I think I do. What just happened? Oh.
I count us and I.
Jake, you're more in that industry, what do you think?
I. I do think it needs to be.
With the stipulation that we amend the monument sign from six feet to eight feet, does that. Need a happy medium?
Eight or less, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the moment, that's the motion.
I second.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, item ten, consideration of approving resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-five. A resol- a resolution appointing the chief administrative officer officer and records officers. For Grantsville City in compliance with the Utah Government Data and Privacy Act.
Pretty easy one if you read it, so. Makes perfect sense, right?
Yep.
Need to designate someone, so I'll make the motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-five as stated on the agenda.
And the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, good. Okay. We do need a closed session, you guys.
I make a motion, we go under closed session.
Motion.
I second it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Five minute break.
Your eyeball out there?
Two minutes.